All right, it's nine o'clock, so I will call to order the February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting, and we will start with a pledge of allegiance led by County Council Karen Swat.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, one thing I want to announce that we will be closing our meeting today in memory of Dave Froso. And with that, first item is the consent agenda, and I understand.
Yes, I would like to pull off the consent agenda, eighteen B and nineteen.
Thanks. Okay, any other of my colleagues request to pull something? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to pull something from consent? These are, this is a list, a long list of motions that are intended to be approved in one vote, but the board is happy to take any off consent and discuss them individually if there's a desire to do so.
Chairman, I see that.
Okay, do we have a motion on the remaining items?
Second.
Motion Gore, second Gustafson, roll call please.
Gore?
Yes.
Holmes, Jones?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
And now we will then take up eighteen B Granite Bay Parks Trails Open Space Maintenance and Recreation Improvement.
The reason I wanted to have it pulled off is because what just struck me that, that we're doing this review for Granite Bay Trails and Open Space Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District, but I'm just wondering why Granite Bay and why now? And so I was hoping that somebody could answer my questions.
Todd, do we have?
Yes, good morning.
Ted Relzon.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Chairman and members of the board, that's a good question Supervisor Jones. This tax assessment from the Streets and Highways Code was developed to pay for maintenance of items in Granite Bay. It's been in place for quite a few years, I believe since two thousand and four. And what it, it doesn't pay for any new construction like park fees would pay for. What this pays for is basically, for instance, the new Premier Soleil subdivision that's west of Auburn Folsom Road on Douglas Boulevard. They're required as part of their conditions of approval to install a Class One paved trail along the frontage of Douglas. And what this tax district pays for is the maintenance of those amenities for any other maintenance of parks, trails, and maintenance of all the amenities that exist in the Granite Bay area. The engineer's report is required under Streets and Highways Code Division fifteen with the Landscape and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two. An engineer's report is required to be prepared every year in, for the update of the fee. And that's, there's three, there's three parts to this update. This is the first one for the preparation of the engineer's report. I do believe we have our consultant here available if you'd like some further, further explanation of the Streets and Highways Code.
Sure, that would be very helpful.
Let me turn this over to Susan Barnes, if she's online. I don't think Susan is online here. So what we can do is we can pull this item off the agenda, oh, there's Susan.
I'm here, I'm sorry. So yes, so the, this is, this is a benefit assessment that was done, as Ted was saying, under the Landscape and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two. And it requires three actions by the board every year in order to continue. The first action would be to assign a firm as the engineer of work. So this is this first action we're asking you to consider today to assign a SCI Consulting Group as the engineer of work to prepare the annually required engineer's report. Then, once that engineer's report is completed, that will be brought back to your board later this year for you to preliminarily approve that and set a public, date for a public hearing. And then the third action would be where you hold the public hearing, take any comments that there may be from the public, and then at that point you would decide whether to continue the assessment for the coming year. So this, these are just three actions that are taken annually to continue this assessment.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Jones, one thing I might also add is that under the Street and Highway Code, this particular process is required even if the assessment is going down. It's simply a statutory requirement that must be followed annually.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so what is board's pleasure regarding item? Oh, excuse me, is there anyone from the public? Thank you for guiding me. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
I see none, Chairman.
Thank you. Motion Gustafson, second, Gore, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And now item nineteen.
The reason I asked to have pull item nineteen was because it was a little bit odd to see that they were purchasing Ski-Doo, the snowmobiles in Carson City, Nevada. And so I did, they did respond to me yesterday, and it makes perfect sense to me, but I was hoping maybe they could inform the public as to why they're purchasing. So is there somebody here to talk on this? Super, great.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello, you know, I actually have Lieutenant Michelle Baxter from the Tahoe substation to help answer probably your question that you have.
Okay, good.
See if I can kind of record online.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I, I understand the question, and what we're looking to do is to use state parks grant funds to purchase snowmobiles for our off-highway vehicle team for search and rescue and also for snowmobile patrols in the Tahoe area. We did look to, to organizations in Placer County, one in Roseville and one in Auburn, and they were not able to provide us with the pieces of equipment we were looking for. We were able to find that equipment in Carson City at a dealer that commonly deals in high volume of this kind of equipment. They were able to give us a very good deal on two thousand and twenty snowmobiles that were the same models as the two thousand and twenty ones that allowed us to save quite a bit of money toward, to spend towards safety equipment associated with those snowmobile patrols. Another reason is that Carson City for us is quite a bit closer for any kind of service or maintenance that needs to provide, be provided on the snowmobiles in a timely manner. And this would allow us to go directly into Carson City to get that service rather than up and over Donner Summit when sometimes weather prohibits us from doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
I see no members of the public, Chairman.
What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll second.
Motion Holmes, second, Jones. This requires a four-fifth vote because of the budget amendment, so roll call please.
Gore?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Wygant?
Yes, thank you. Next is public comment. This is the time when anyone from the public can address the board on something that is not on the agenda, keeping in mind we can take no action, but if you would wish to do that, please come forward, state your name.
Good morning, honorable supervisors.
Good morning.
My name is Ramona Brockman. I'm the president of the DeWitt Community Complex Organization. So I've given you basically my comments, but attached to it are two recent articles from the Auburn Journal. So last month, our treasurer, Dave Allen, provided you with an update on the significant amount of work our group has accomplished toward renovating the historic DeWitt Theater. Dave also noted some of the challenges that we've encountered due to COVID restrictions and due to a lack of clear support and direction from the board. I'm here today to reiterate our accomplishments and challenges, and in light of the pending demolition at DeWitt, ask you for a timely response to the issues we raised in January and again today. I imagine that you reviewed the renovation concept drawings for the DeWitt Theater and endorsements that were provided to you at the January twelve meeting. Since then, we have received additional Auburn Journal coverage and endorsements from the AAUW and from ARD board members with whom we have been in communication with to discuss collaboration between our groups. As you can see, we have garnered broad community support from many individuals, businesses, and organizations, and worked with an architect to develop realistic and impressive renovation design plans for the theater. From the many community members that we have been in contact with, their message is clear. People desire and need community uses to return to DeWitt. At this point, we are poised to ramp up our fundraising, and we are in the process of developing an operational and renovation business plan. Today, we are requesting that the board act in a timely manner to place the following items on a future agenda, even as early as next week, if possible. Item one is retention of the DeWitt Theater and the hallway connection to the former senior center buildings. Due to the current demolition preparations, action to retain the hallway and its structural integrity is critically important today. Saving the hallway would provide a cost-effective way to include sufficient bathroom and storage space for the theater. Ideally, we would like to retain the hallway and one adjacent senior center building, building three fourteen, or even just the south half of the building of three fourteen for these purposes. Item two, a time extension for at least two years added to the June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one sunset date as granted by the board on April twenty-three, two thousand and nineteen. In order to participate in the big day of giving and apply for some grants, we need to submit tax records for two years, which we will be able to do in two thousand and twenty-two. And item three is formal support and direction from the county for a renovation project. The work of the DeWitt Community Complex has shown that the community is supportive of our mission. The community wants and is willing to work to save a few additional key DeWitt buildings for community use. We're asking you to work with us to find a win-win that meets the county's needs and the community's interests in renovating the DeWitt Theater and at a later date, the auditorium for community use and benefit. Thank you for your prompt attention to these pertinent matters.
Thank you, thank you. And I want to let you know that I'll work with the clerk and county exec's office to make sure we get this on agenda, so we're happy to do that for sure. And then Cindy, do you have a?
Oops, I forget which microphone I'm talking into. No, I think I was unfamiliar till very recently about this, you know, expanding into other buildings and all of that. But as far as fundraising and the opportunity to raise funding, I'm certainly in support of time extension and moving forward that way. I would have to talk much more with staff about this whole issue of, because that just came up this last week in an email that I received, but I support getting it on an agenda. And the timeliness of that is, I think, the fundraising, the agreement, I think Karen, is June or July? That is the deadline on that?
Yes, what you're referring to is, and, you know, we have new board members here who weren't here at the time when we did the master plan. But as we did the hearing for the Placer County Government Center Master Plan, the board added an additional development standard that required a public hearing prior to any demolition of the theater and gave a, I believe it was a two-year period. I may be wrong on the two or three.
It was two years.
Three-year, a three-year.
Two years, two years.
Two-year, a two-year period in which to give proponents of renovating at time to fundraise. So in order to take that up again, that would be a cedro matter to bring forward to the board, requesting an extension of that time is something that certainly could be coordinated. And then it would be up to the board as to whether they, they wanted to give an extension, if so, for how long?
Well, certainly based on COVID and a lot of the extreme, extraordinary circumstances, I strongly support that and look forward to having a public hearing on it with the rest of my board members. But as, as it relates to the hallway and that request, I think we need staff to analyze whether that's even possible or doable. I will say that because I live in a very old house and remodel it a lot of times, even though you might think the space is cost-effective, it may not be cost-effective. There's no plumbing in a hallway and, and those sorts of things, so.
We do have, when we received this request, we did reach out to Facilities Management, and Paul Breckenridge is actually on Zoom to discuss that. But it's my understanding that this hallway is not connected to the building, but I would defer to Paul to give some more details if the board would like to hear that.
Why don't we just wait until we take up the item later on and I think we're gonna need a?
On the agenda, because we're not agendaing it for the public to weigh in or anything.
Sounds good.
We'll get, we'll get it scheduled, and then Paul can come back and give a little breakdown on that.
Good.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, great, really appreciate, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to address the board during public comment?
I see no further public comment.
Thanks, Megan. Boy, just in time to be on time, that'd be the last time that happens today, probably. We will now take up our nine fifteen item at nine sixteen or seventeen. And it is a resolution to receive an update. It's a proclamation declaring February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one as two thousand and eleven day, and we will receive an update from our Health and Human Services regarding two thousand and eleven. But to kick it off, I'll start by reading the proclamation. Whereas every hour of every day, people need to access, need access to essential services, requiring reliable access to a range of supports, including but not limited to housing, healthcare, and food. And whereas two eleven Placer launched in July of two thousand and twenty and has helped provide a twenty-four-seven, one-stop shop for referrals to life-changing resources, including food, transportation, senior care, employment services, housing assistance, mental health support, and much more. And whereas two eleven is a free and easy, easy-to-remember telephone number, and two eleven Placer is also easy, accessible via texting or online database with TTY and language interpretation available. And whereas two eleven are also beneficial in emergencies and allow for quick dissemination of information regarding evacuations, shelters, and aid while reducing call volume to nine eleven. Whereas two eleven has proven crucial tool during COVID pandemic, a time of heightened need in our community. And whereas in its first six months, two eleven has responded to seven thousand three hundred seventy-seven calls and eighty-two texts to link Placer residents to with much-needed services. Therefore, it be proclaimed that the above proclamation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors, Placer County, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regularly-held meeting February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. So with that, I will then turn it over to someone who's going to address us from Health and Human Services.
Hello, can you guys hear me? Hello, good morning, Chair Wygant and members of the board. My name is Katie Combs-Pritchard with Health and Human Services, and I'm here today to provide a brief update on two-on-one services in Placer County in conjunction with a proclamation that you just read, recognizing this coming Thursday, February eleventh, is two-on-one day in Placer County. We don't anticipate returning to your board with this item every year, but given that two-on-one has just surpassed its first six months of full operation here in Placer County, we wanted to provide your board with a brief update on where we are. So you'll remember, I see my slides here, that Bev Anderson pictured here was one of a few community members who had been longtime supporters of bringing two-on-one to Placer County. And the support of those folks helped culminate in your board approving staff to move forward in implementing the service back in two thousand and nineteen. Next slide, please. We submitted our application to the California Public Utilities Commission, or the CPUC, very shortly thereafter, knowing that such things can take some time to get approved. And while we waited for CPUC approval, the county and our partners at Connecting Point, our information and referral vendor got to work on other pieces, building out the new two-on-one Placer website, as well as a two-on-one Tahoe Truckee website that combines resources for residents in that area across county lines. Thousands of resources were migrated into the database feeding these websites. We extend special thanks to Placer County Office of Education and specifically Michael Lombardo for managing the network of care site, which proved to be a foundational information source and for facilitating a really smooth transition to two-on-one. In March, the CPUC gave us the green light and the short code designation. We did a soft launch of a system in May by transitioning our COVID-nineteen helpline to two-on-one while still working on database updates for general resources in the background. Previously, the COVID-nineteen helpline had been staffed by HHS Human Services employees in a pop-up call center. With the success of that soft launch, two-on-one then had its full public launch on July first of two thousand and twenty. Next slide, please. So when people think of two-on-one, they mostly think of phone calls, but that's just one way of accessing the resources. There's also texting, as well as the web platform, which has both a search feature as well as a chat option or even a form submitter. And in terms of accessibility over the phone, there's TTY available, and two-on-one has multilingual call specialists on staff. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Yep, thanks. And just to very quickly highlight the range of resources that two-on-one can connect folks with, there are disability services, employment, veteran services, senior services, suicide prevention and loss, transportation, and just many more resources which you can see highlighted here on the slide. And next slide, please. Two-on-one is also a resource we can leverage as a county during special circumstances. And in fact, one could argue that two-on-one launched and has operated under ongoing major incidences. In just the first six months here, for example, they've screened callers eligibility for tenant-based rental assistance, helped connect vulnerable residents with resources during extreme heat events and public safety power shut-offs, and of course, taken over our COVID-nineteen hotline, yielding questions about testing, routing business complaints, and most recently, answering a lot of questions about vaccines. COVID call volume in the last few weeks has been at least twice what it had been through much of the pandemic and even higher on some days. Two-on-one is able, able to field vaccine appointment calls for seniors who don't have internet access, and they also launched our text alert system for vaccine information, which as of today has more than twenty-one thousand subscribers. Folks can text PLACERVACCINE, that's one word, to the number eight-nine-eight-two-one-one to receive updates as we progress in the various phases and tiers of vaccine distribution. We also send alerts each time large batches of appointments are released for our county clinic. Next slide, please. Here's just a quick look at some of the trends we've seen in two-on-one calls in the first six months of operation from July through the end of December. Top needs included housing, healthcare, food and utility assistance, and the bulk of calls came from Auburn and Roseville. This kind of data can help us and our partners in the community identify gaps, needs, and trends over time. Next slide, please. All in all, two-on-one fielded more than seventy-three hundred calls in its first six months, more than six thousand website page views, and more than eighty texts. And even those numbers have shifted substantially with the recent vaccination campaigns. You see eighty-two checks in the first six months, while two-on-one is now getting more than a hundred texts every single day now since our vaccination text alert system went live. And while most of those texts are about vaccines, some are links to other resources as well. So it's our hope that even after the pandemic ends, folks will remember two-on-one and look to it as a source for resources. Next slide, please. I want to end by thanking some of the funders who have stepped up to support two-on-one financially, including First Five, Kaiser Permanente, our Western Placer Consolidated Transportation Service Agency, and the Placer Community Foundation. Together, these partners have contributed about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the two-on-one budget. We've sought grant funding aggressively to support ongoing operations and will continue to do so. We want to thank these partners for their recognition of the vital service that two-on-one provides to our residents. You guys can take down my slides now. As I wrap it up, I want to thank Jeff Brown, our previous HHS director, for his leadership in bringing about two-on-one services to Placer County. I do have my colleague Raul Martinez, as well as Tim Giuliani from Connecting Point here, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Since we're remote, we won't be taking an in-person photo with the proclamation today, but we will be putting it on full display this Thursday when we hold a Facebook Live event on our Placer County Facebook page to celebrate two-on-one day with a few of our partners, and I hope they'll join us then. Thank you very much, and we'd be happy to take any of your questions.
Thanks, Katie, great job. Are there any comments or questions by my colleagues?
I just, I had a comment or two. Katie, great job to everybody, and I look at forty-one calls a day, and I'm thinking, that's even more than my office gets, so. Sorry, I had to be a little humorous right now, we get so many calls and emails. But tremendous job and tremendous resource for our residents. It's unbelievable how much demand was there. And when we envisioned this, I just wasn't sure of the numbers of calls you would be able to serve. And what a tremendous, tremendous service to our community. So I want to thank you and your staff and for the variety of issues they have to help people through. I mean, it's pretty amazing, so thank you.
Jim Van Bunny.
Yeah, I too want to thank staff for bringing this forward. Particularly, I want to thank Bev Anderson, who was steadfast in pushing this forward. It took a while for us to get there, but we finally got it. And I'm glad to see that it's been so successful. I want to give a little shout-out to Tim Giuliani, who I've talked to before when we were moving this forward. And Connecting Point is a good, a good way for us to bring this, this item forward. So thank you all, I really appreciate it.
Bunny?
And just a thank you, I guess it's Connecting Point that answers all the two-on-one calls, right? And my goodness, the number of calls that you've gotten because of COVID. So I just want to say thank you, our board appreciates it because our residents needed to be able to reach out to someone who did, those folks who didn't, don't have internet access. So the fact that they have a phone number to reach out to is terrific, a person on the other end to help them. So thank you, I know it's been a lot of extra work for you and your staff, but it's really appreciated because our residents really need the service, so thank you.
Thanks, Bunny. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
I see no public comment on the side of.
So I will just emphasize my thanks to all of staff and great presentation, and then we need a motion for the proclamation. Motion Holmes, second, Gore, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And in that we're at least a minute and a half above schedule for our next timed item, our county exec has an announcement to make with regards to HHS.
Yeah, and I, really, I just wanted to do a short thing, because I could, I could probably go on with a number of staff and other operations, but our child support services staff are really exceptional, and, and they have been for a long time. I think it's just a testament to the leadership that they have now and the leadership they've had previously. But as I've mentioned to you at the end of our kind of weekly update, they again were ranked number one in the state based on a number of metrics they use, specifically around federal performance metrics that really dictate timeliness of service and delivery, how they provide services to our residents that are utilizing our child support services operation. I just wanted to say thank you to all of them. I know, you know, obviously, as we've been in COVID, not only our employees feel the impact, but I think our residents do as well. And I think when we provide services far and above what we're seeing across the state, and I know we're, we're kind of actually deviating from number one and number two, so that means we're doing some right things in this arena. And I could probably go on with a number of different operations in the county, but I'll just say, I wanted to share that with you all and do it publicly because I do think it's just a testament to the work that they do and the, some of the challenging roles that they play to provide those services. So I wanted to give that a quick shout-out. And obviously, two-on-one, as I didn't mention, but, you know, this was, as Supervisor Holmes alluded to, five, six years in the making. We talked about this for a long time leading up to it, and I'll tell you, the And I'll tell you, the timeliness to put this in couldn't have been more important than what it is now, because it's really the foundation for communication and outreach, and it'll be that way as we move on. So, again, good forethought, good vision around that, and something that's really come in handy as we've worked through this pandemic. So, thank you again. I appreciate it. Staff there on the line, thanks for all of the work that you guys do.
Yep. And thanks from all of us up here. So, we'll now take up our 9:30 timed item, which is Community Development Resources and Lake Tahoe Shore Zone Ordinance. And Rebecca?
Good morning, Chair Wygant, members of the board. Again, my name is Rebecca Tabor. I'm the Deputy Director of the Engineering and Surveying Division. And the item before you is the Lake Tahoe Shore Zone Ordinance Update. With me are members of a multi-departmental team that worked together on this update. I have Peter Kratz, the Assistant Director from Public Works in Tahoe. I've got Lori Morse, the Deputy Director with Facilities Management, and Maggie Tides, Deputy County Counsel. The actions requested of your board this morning are number one, to introduce and waive an oral reading of an ordinance repealing and replacing in its entirety County Code, Article 12.32, Lake Tahoe Shore Zone. And two, conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution establishing a fee schedule for peer encroachment permit fees. Our objectives in working on this update over the past year were to reassess the county's role in a multi-jurisdictional peer permitting process, eliminate overlapping requirements between the county TRPA and the State Lands Commission, reduce county regulations, such as removing county oversight for the design and construction of peers, and removing buoys, and really, just to focus on peers within a county property interest, ensuring public So, the definition of a county property interest is included in the ordinance. It means county ownership or right-of-way, including fee title, easement, lease, or license. County interest is variable and dependent on historic subdivision final maps and a 1951 Board Resolution that accepted lakefront areas shown on these final maps as public roads, parks, and/or public property. We also sometimes refer to this as a county beach interest. For some background, the existing Article 12.32 is called the Shore Zone Protection Regulations, and it was adopted in the late 1960s. Most peers were permitted by Placer County between 1968 through about 95, and only a few after the year 2000. Little to no activity on new peers happened until about 2019. TRPA essentially had a moratorium on new peer construction. In the meantime, Placer County has issued peer permits and agreements on a case-by-case TRPA adopted an amendment to their code of ordinances in 2019 for shore zone. This allows 128 new private peers lakewide over the next 16 years. 58 of those new peers, private peers, are in Placer County. And TRPA will release a maximum of 12 peers every two years. It's worth noting that Placer County has the largest share of new peer allocations. With the TRPA code amendment, we recognize that the county ordinance needed updating. So first, we reached out to TRPA and the California State Lands Commission, and we learned that they have a 2019 MOU for concurrent coordinated and timely review of peers. As you know, TRPA is the lead permitting agency in the Lake Tahoe Basin. The State Lands Commission protects the public trust, or the state easement, and that is the area between the high and low water mark, elevation 6,223 to 6,228.75 feet, Lake Tahoe datum around Lake Tahoe. State Lands Commission also issues, issues leases for the sovereign land lying under Lake Tahoe that peers extend over. So, we concluded with TRPA and State Lands' involvement that that basis allows Placer County to trim down our current ordinance and focus primarily on peers that are within a county property interest. So, county staff roles include CDRA for processing peer encroachment permits and applicable building permits, the Department of Public Works for approving the peer encroachment permits, parks for performing annual inspections of county beaches, and Facilities Management Real Estate Services to evaluate and recommend annual use charges. Collectively, the Tahoe Beaches Working Group is a staff-level group that reviews county property interests and provides consistency and coordination across projects. So, how many peers are we talking about? About two-thirds of Lake Tahoe is within California. About 21 miles of shoreline are along Placer County. Approximately 400 existing peers are within the Placer County portion. And of these 400, approximately 42 are in a county property interest or beach interest, so about 10%. Of these 42 peers, approximately 29 have existing peer permit approvals in our records. So, there's only about 13 that we may not have passed peer permit or agreements in place. For public outreach, we provided this informational item to the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council on July 9th, and then again on September 10th. We worked collaboratively with the Tahoe Lakefront Association, Owners Association, excuse me, and we made some refinements as a result of our collaboration with TLOA. These included concurrent county permit reviews with the TRPA and State Lands reviews to save time for these applicants. We clarified the county's role related to the public trust. We discussed annual use charge, charges, and also when an existing peer in a county beach interest would be required to get a new peer encroachment permit. The application process for a peer encroachment permit is outlined in the updated ordinance. Essentially, we'll do an initial review of the project and then determine what permits would be required. If the project is within a county property interest, an application would then be required for a peer encroachment permit. A one-time fee would be collected, an annual use charge may be triggered as part of that review, and a copy of the TRPA permit and the State Lands lease is required before we issue the county permit. If no building permit is required and the peer is not within a county property interest, no permits are needed from Placer County. We are proposing a one-time peer encroachment permit fee. This is proposed by the resolution that is included as attachment to your staff report. A new peer application would cost $750, and an existing peer that needs a modification would cost $450, and the fees would adjust annually. Annual use charges for the ongoing private use of the portion of the peer within a county parcel or easement will be considered with each peer permit. This is similar to how the State Lands Commission charges a fee for the use of their sovereign lands. And we worked with county council to avoid a gift of public funds issue. The annual use charges are applied on a case-by-case basis with the review of each peer encroachment permit and considering the public passage provided over, under, or around the peer if it's in a county property interest. For ordinance implementation, all new peers will come into the county for review and will follow through with the ordinance. Any existing peers that require or propose an electrical or plumbing upgrade that requires a building permit would also come through for county staff review. So generally, if a modification to an existing peer requires a building permit, that will trigger an updated peer encroachment permit. And then, similar to our current practice, complaints and if, if results of annual county beach inspections identify issues, then we would follow through accordingly. So, I've included the actions requested again for your convenience. And with that, I'm available for any questions, and, and the whole team is available if you have any questions.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Any questions at this time by colleagues? Bunny?
So, pardon my, like, my brain is not clicking in here. The annual use fee, which would be determined if it was needed, that's, they pay the county or the county pays them?
Oh, they would pay the county. It would be part of the peer encroachment permit. It would, it would be included in that permit that gets signed and agreed to, and then it would be annually paid to the county by the peer owner.
And, and that would be because why? Why would they actually get assessed for an annual fee? I mean, I read what you wrote, but it didn't quite make sense to me that it's a nominal amount, consider reasonable public access over, around, or under a peer.
So, I think you might be getting into the gift of public funds issue. And it, it's not an assessment, but I think I might have Maggie speak to that.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. Pardon me, I'm new. [laughs] First board meeting. Yeah, so this is a, a use fee that the owner of the peer would pay to the county only if they are using exclusively a portion of that county property interest.
Thank you. That is clear. I appreciate it.
It's exactly similar to every other encroachment permit we issue.
Thank you.
Todd, did you have a comment?
No, I didn't have anything further.
Your light is on.
Well, it's, this is me.
Oh.
Here, I'll put my name tag over. Will that change how you read that?
No, it won't help, Todd.
Sorry.
It won't, but yeah.
I realized my name was over there. Yes, Cindy has a comment.
Cindy, would you have a, do you have a question or a comment?
I, I just wanted to make sure, and, and I know that when we, when I was briefed on this issue, and we went through it in a lot of detail, and I really appreciate all the hard work everybody's done. The Tahoe Lakefront Property Owners Association agrees with what is being presented today, as far as you know. I know you've worked very diligently with them, as well as everyone else, so I look forward to hearing any public comment, but I just wanted to thank you for all the outreach and time you spent, you know, thinking through the implications of this policy. It's great to allow this to move forward and allow the, the folks to have peers, but also to make sure that the public has the right of passage in and around these peers while they're on county right-of-way. So, thank you, or county properties.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I see no other questions or comments from my colleagues. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item?
There is online. Jan Briscoe, go ahead and turn on your video and unmute your mic to give your comments.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, but if you could speak up a little bit, it would be helpful.
This is, sorry about that. I'm sorry I'm, I'm in outer space today.
That's good.
[laughs] That's what happens when you let, when you let the kids try to pick it up for you. I guess we're lucky it's that mild. Jan Briscoe with Tahoe Lakefront Owners Association, and I wanted to extend my thanks to Rebecca and to Peter Kratz for meeting with me and discussing with me some of our concerns. I think, I think that it really helped the process, and my only recommendation is bring us in early in the process so that we can avoid any of the, of the lengthy back and forth that we, that we had to have here. But I do appreciate staff's willingness to work with us on this. We got most, but not all of our comments incorporated. We think that this process is a good one because it does bring back to the fore exactly what is required here. We're, we're hoping that we don't have a lot of missteps with outreach to our members and that kind of thing, but we do want to make sure that the annual fee is clearly delineated because we don't understand how that is derived. And if people are making other accommodations for public access, up and around or over, or, you know, other types of accommodations, that maybe the annual fee would not be required, or maybe it would be something commensurate with, you know, not a huge impact. So, while these peers may be crossing this area, sometimes, or a walkway is crossing that area, it does not hamper the public's right to pass and repass over that, over that location. So, we hope that the, when we get down to actually seeing how the annual fees are assessed, that they are in fact fair and reasonable. The nominal fee of $750 was a little bit of a shock to us, but we understand staff's time and what it takes to actually go through these processes, and hopefully, they will go expeditiously. They won't be in process for months and months at a time, so we're, we have good hope for that and anticipate a smooth transition into this new process. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further public comment.
No further comments. Okay, with no further comments, bring this back to the board for action.
I'll move approval. I'll second.
Motion, Gusterson, second. Gore, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now take up, because we're ahead of schedule, our department items, starting with item six, Placer County Housing Development Advisory Task Force.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Anne Marie Novatny. I'm fairly new to Placer County. I've been here about five months. I'm a housing specialist in the Community Development Resource Agency, and I'm going to be presenting to you the proposed Housing Development Advisory Task Force item. So, staff is proposing that we have a new board-appointed Housing Development Advisory Task Force. We're proposing that this task force be comprised of nine members with expertise in housing development and knowledgeable about housing needs in Placer County. And the purpose of this task force will be to advise the board and housing development proposals and available sites or affordable housing projects that would merit review and consideration by the board. Just for a little bit of background, back in August of 2019, staff gave a presentation to the board on the Affordable Housing Program, as well as the Housing Strategy and Development Plan, and the Housing Funding Investment Strategy. At that time, the board authorized staff to work with stakeholders to explore a private housing trust that would address housing, affordable housing challenges in the unincorporated areas of the county. And the trust would provide a mechanism to secure gap funding for affordable housing projects, accommodate donations of public, private, and nonprofit funding sources, and also administer loans to affordable home builders. Then in November of 2019, staff came back to the board with a follow-up item in which the board directed staff to proceed with supporting the establishment of the private housing trust, also development of initial funds management agreements to establish procedures for future county funds and/or future affordable housing fees to be deposited into the trust, as well as the development of this housing advisory group. And then in January of 2020, the private trust was formed and is named Housing Trust Placer. So, the framework that we're looking at for the housing advisory group is we're proposing that this group would meet regularly. They'd have public meetings. They would be subject to the Brown Act, and they would be focusing on considering housing development proposals. They would also be looking at identifying available housing sites and affordable housing projects that would merit review and consideration by the board. They would report to the board at designated times with the list of recommended potential projects, sites, funding opportunities, et cetera. And I just want to note that this would be strictly a recommending body. Any decisions would be at the board's discretion. So, as far as the composition of the task force, we're proposing nine seats with broad representation from a variety of sectors within the housing industry, such as builders, experienced infill development, residential and commercial brokers, banking, and our mortgage lenders, et cetera. The member eligibility is, we're going to be just asking that they demonstrate some type of expertise in housing development in Placer County. We're recommending that the member terms be staggered between two and three years. least quarterly, February, May, August, and November, and meeting more often as needed. So if the board approves staff's recommendation, what we'll be doing next is we're going to be soliciting applications for the nine-member seats for a 30-day period that would be ending approximately in mid-March. Then we'll come back to the board by April with the recommended seat appointments for the board's confirmation, and then we're hoping that the first meeting would be held in May of this year. So staff's recommendation is we're asking that the board adopt a resolution to designate the member seats eligibility requirements and terms with appointing authority for the Placer County Housing Development Advisory Task Force, and that draft board resolution is attached as attachment A to the staff report. So this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Any questions, comments by board members? Jim?
Yes, thank you, Anne Marie, for the presentation. When the applications are solicited and their applications come in, who will be reviewing those? Will it be someone from your staff?
Yes, I'll be on the reviewing panel, probably Shawna and some other folks from the Community Development Resource Agency.
So your staff will determine which applicants will come to the Board of Supervisors, or will the Board of Supervisors have a chance to look at all the applications?
We haven't decided that yet. I guess it depends on how many we get in. I know, Shawna, you want to add anything about that? It's something we can look into if that's the purview of the board.
Good morning, Shawna Purvines. We definitely, as we see those applications coming in, we could establish a review committee and consider, we would need to come back to your board and, you know, request participation from board members to be able to sit in and review on that, if that's the direction you'd like to take.
Yeah, I prefer to have the board have some kind of part of that discussion. Thank you. Thank you, Anne Marie.
Bonnie?
Well, just to follow up on that, right, other boards and commissions that are established as sort of an arm of this Board of Supervisors are approved by the Board of Supervisors, right? Whether it's MACs or the Parks and Rec Committee, so I think that's a good idea to have some review by the board.
See no other questions from my colleagues? Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this item?
Chairman, I see no public comment.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action. We're asked to adopt a resolution to designate the members' seats, et cetera, with regards to the Placer County Housing Authority Advisory Task Force.
So I have one point to make, if I may. So I think this is a great idea. I think it's terrific that we're going to utilize experts in our community to help us look at opportunities, to be creative with affordable housing, right? And I think that's really important. I love that you've got different areas of expertise. I think that's important. One thing I want to just point out to my colleagues, which I think is a good idea, after the first couple of years, folks will be allowed to serve two four-year terms, which I think allows for a variety of thought, right? So if somebody's a mortgage broker and he's been doing this for 10 years, bring in some new thought. So that's a recommendation by staff. As we look at our other commissions, committees, et cetera, I think that's something that our board needs to think about, is allowing a little, maybe looking at term limits, eight to 12 years on other boards and commissions, so that we can bring in additional thought. So as we're looking at our boards and committees in the future, that's something that I think would go a long way to allowing more people to participate in the process and what's going on in our county, as well as allow for sort of different thoughts and input.
Thanks, Bonnie. Any other comments, questions from colleagues? Cindy?
Thanks, Robert. You know, I agree with providing as much input as possible, but sometimes you don't get a lot of volunteers and outreach, and so term limits can create issues as well. So I just would want to make sure that we think it through, post the positions, but if people are still willing to serve, they're doing a good job, and no one else is interested, I don't want to terminate their service by any means. Volunteers are always welcome, so we pay them so much on this, big salary. But I, in general, agree with new thought, new process, and allowing more applications, so I agree with that.
Jim?
I just want to remind us that what we want to do is get things done. We want to make sure that they're moving forward with some suggestions and some things to bring back to us for approval, so term limits are kind of scary as far as I'm concerned when you have someone that's doing a good job.
And I'd just throw out a couple of things that I think, over the years, may be guiding principles for staff as you go forward. I think our county has been very well-served with being able to consider and undertake some innovative public-private sector work. I think we're also well-served when we have a lot of transparency and involvement publicly, particularly starting up something new. And then on these kinds of commissions, committees, and I think it fits well in this case, broad representation, diversity of the membership, I think will serve us well. So as we go forward, if you can just kind of give us feedback, and of course, one of my colleagues talked about having a voice as we move forward, so I think all those things will help us.
May I add to that?
Sure.
I appreciate that, and it made me think about our housing advocates in the different cities, right? And that fortunately, this is an open public process, it's a Brown Act committee, so I think it'd be great to at least invite the housing staff from our local jurisdictions to maybe sit and listen, because it allows for sort of transfer of ideas, and sometimes people think about things and network and come up with a better solution if those folks are at least invited to participate and listen to the conversation.
Okay, so the question before us is the resolution. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll move approval. Second.
Motion, Gore, second, Gustafson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Let's take up our next department item. We're a little early for 10 o'clock, which is salary adjustments, certain law enforcement classifications. Kate?
Thank you, Chair Wiegand, and members of the board. I'm Kate Sampson with your Human Resources Department. This morning, I'm requesting introduction of an ordinance implementing salary adjustments for certain law enforcement classifications, as well as members of the Board of Supervisors. Pursuant to the county charter and negotiated agreement with the Deputy Sheriff's Association, the county uses a formula to set salaries for certain law enforcement classifications, predominantly deputy sheriffs and sheriff sergeants. After taking an average of the maximum salaries for similar classifications in the counties of El Dorado, Nevada, and Sacramento, HR recommends the board adjust salaries for Placer County employees by a range of about 2.6% to 2.9%. For deputy sheriffs, the proposed increase results in a base salary of about $96,000 annually. Also pursuant to the county charter, the same formula is used to calculate salary adjustments for members of your board. HR recommends adjustments to salary by 2.55% for an annual amount of about $83,000. This ordinance is proposed to be effective February 13, 2021, and I'm available to address any questions.
Thanks, Kate. Any questions from board members, comments? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public?
I see no public comment, Chairman.
I'm sorry, nothing? Thanks. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll second.
Motion, Holmes, second, Gore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, this requires a roll call.
Thank you, Karen. Roll call, please.
Gore?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Wiegand?
Aye, thank you. We'll now take up our 10 o'clock timed item. That is an appeal of Planning Commission's denial of the Crowley setback variance.
Good morning.
Good morning, German, and members of the board. My name is Amy Rossig with the Placer County Planning Services Division. The item that I have before you this morning is the Crowley variance appeal, which is an appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of a variance. The project site is located at 5710 Johnson Drive in the unincorporated part of Lincoln. It's located just a mile south, less than a mile, of Hidden Falls Regional Park. The project site is zoned farm with a 20-acre minimum, and it's a 20-acre parcel. The project site is developed with three agricultural buildings, a gravel driveway, a pond, there's an ag well, and there's also an NID canal which runs through a portion of the property. In January of 2020, the property owners filed a variance appeal, or a variance application, for two existing agricultural buildings that are located on the property, and this is the site plan which was provided to us as part of that variance application. Two of the existing buildings are located in the middle of the property, along the western part of the property, and the larger 1,600-square-foot building is located five feet from the side property line, and the smaller 651-square-foot building's located 10 feet from the property line, and the standard setback in the zoning district is 30 feet. And then there's also, as I mentioned earlier, an NID canal which runs in this area. The standard setback from an NID canal is 100 feet, and the smaller building is located 30 feet from the NID canal, and the larger building's located about 65 feet from the NID canal. So here are two pictures of the existing agricultural buildings which are located on the property. The 651-square-foot building is located on the left-hand side. This was on the property when the property owners purchased the property in October of 2018, and it's constructed by the previous property owner. Based on aerial images, I believe it was constructed between 2011 and 2012. The image on the right-hand side is the 1,600-square-foot building. This was built by the current property owners sometime between October of 2018 and September of 2019. Here are two images of the property in the vicinity. The image on the left-hand side is located along the western property line, looking north towards Johnson Drive. The NID canal and the existing agricultural buildings are located behind me. You can see that it has a moderate slope, there are scattered oak trees in the area. And the image on the right-hand side is looking now south, and it's located again on the western side of the property. You can see that the slope increases to a moderate slope, there's oak trees further down in the valley area. The property owners do have shipping containers which they have installed on the property, which you can see in this image on the right-hand side. Shipping containers are allowed in the farm zoning district, but they have located these shipping containers on concrete platforms, which may trigger a building permit requirement, but because they're located outside of the setback, they're not included in this variance request. So the appellant has provided justification for the variance request, and they've outlined five reasons why they believe their variance should be approved. The first one is that there is a specific Placer County webpage which is misleading. This is in reference to the Agricultural Commissioner's website, which discusses agricultural buildings, and there's also a link to an agricultural exemption building form, and excerpts of this form and the website were included in your staff report as part of the appellant's letter. The second point is that the topography in the NID canal limit placement of the buildings, and this is supported by topographical maps, which the appellant included in their appeal letter. Those maps show that there's about 275 feet in this vicinity that's relatively flat and would require a minimal grading. The third point is that NID was consulted regarding both structures, and they have no issues, and this is true, NID was consulted in April of 2020, and they provided a letter saying that they were in support of the project. The fourth point is that the 651-square-foot was built prior to their ownership, and the fifth point is that the 1,600-square-foot building was built in good faith and reliant on information provided on the county website. So this project has gone through two public hearings prior to today. The first one was before the zoning administrator in August of 2020. Prior to that hearing, we received one letter in support of the variance, and we received four public comments during the hearing. The zoning administrator outlined the reasons why he denied the request pursuant to the zoning ordinance. Some of the reasons were that he felt that there were no special circumstances due to the property being 20 acres in size and uniform in shape. He also determined that because of the public comment which was received during that time, during that hearing, that these buildings could be injurious to the adjacent property owners, although there is no strict definition of what injurious to adjacent property owners And the appellant appealed the denial of the zoning administrator's decision to the Planning Commission, and prior to this hearing, we received one letter in opposition to the request, and we received three public comments during the hearing. The five points that I discussed earlier were brought forward by the appellant to support their variance request, and during their appeal letter, they also provided what they call a compromise, which was to relocate the 1,600-square-foot building, which is located five feet from the property line, to be 30 feet from the property line, to be in compliance, and to keep the 651-square-foot building in its current location. And the Planning Commission deliberated on this, trying to see if they could find special circumstances to support this request, but ultimately, the Planning Commission denied their variance request in a four-to-three vote. So before you this morning is staff's recommendation, sorry, from the Development Review Commission, recommending that you deny the variance, or deny the appeal brought forward by the property owners, and uphold the Planning Commission's decision to deny, the Planning Commission's decision of the zoning administrator's denial of the variance request. And I would like to also mention that we have received three letters prior to today's hearing. One was in support of the variance request, and two of the letters were against the variance request. I'm available if you have any questions.
Great, great job, Amy. Thanks. Any questions? Jim?
Thanks, Amy. I'd like to look at the, the appellant says that the Placer County webpage regarding requirements for agricultural buildings is misleading. Can you help me understand what that's about, or is the appellant here?
Not sure if they're online.
All right.
I do not see them in the audience. But I can explain why they find it misleading. So the Ag Commissioner's website states that if you're in certain zoning districts and you meet a certain acreage requirement, that you're exempt from building code requirements. There's also a link to the building, Placer County Building Services Division's page, and on that page, there's an ag exemption form that someone, a property owner, would have to complete. They take that form to the ag commissioner, who would verify if there is an agricultural use, but on that form, it does state that they still have to meet planning requirements for setbacks in height, they still have to meet environmental health requirements if there's a well in septic or public works for encroachment permits.
So the appellant misunderstood what the application form was?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Kat?
Yeah, I have a question. So my question is about the smaller building, the one that was built in 2010, 2011. So why are they having to request a variance on something that they didn't build?
So that building was existing on the property prior to their ownership. There wasn't a building permit issued for that building prior to them taking ownership. As new owners, they do kind of inherit the problems that were existing on this property. And I would also mention, as part of their variance application, they proposed this building as part of the variance request. This wasn't proposed by staff.
Okay, so when they tried to offer a negotiation of moving the larger building but leaving the smaller building, the zoning administrator didn't agree with that idea?
So that compromise was proposed during the Planning Commission hearing. It wasn't discussed during the zoning administrator hearing.
Okay, but the Planning Commission didn't agree with that?
They, there was a lot of deliberation, and they also spoke with the adjacent property owner because he was on the phone, and they were trying to see if they could come up with some sort of compromise, but ultimately, in a four-to-three vote, it was denied.
Some things in this report kind of concern me because there are some things pointed out here, such as, which to me gives a...
some sort of compromise. But ultimately, in a four to three vote, it was denied.
Okay. Some things in this report kind of concern me because there are some things pointed out here, such as, which to me gives a negative light on the appellant's. Because it says in the report here that shipping containers are in allowed use on agricultural properties and not subject to building permit requirements, though it is possible, that to me is not very determinative, possible that the elevated platforms on which they are located are subject to building permit review and approval. Neither of the elevated platforms are located within any setback, therefore this information is provided only as background. Kind of my point is, what's the point? You know, that's just, that reflects negatively on them. And then when you continue down, it says that in December 2019, the appellant sought after the fact building permits for the 650 square foot building and the 1,600. It was discovered during the permit review process that a variance would be required for the two existing buildings, plus the applicants indicated a desire to construct a third building, which would be an 858 square foot Quonset hut building, which appeared, okay, also not determinative in my book, appeared to also require a setback variance, though it has since been determined that a variance is not required for this building. So what's the point of saying that in there? You know, this is really reflecting very negatively on the appellant, if you ask me. So, and then if you, I'm going to comment on, further, the zoning administrator further found that granting of these variances could be injurious to nearby property or improvements. In making his findings, the zoning administrator stated that there is no clear standard of what constitutes an injurious improvement, but because the neighbor to the immediate west felt that they were harmed by the unpermitted construction of these buildings. This was the basis for the zoning administrator to find that it was injurious, although there's no standard that constitutes what's injurious, and because the neighbor complained. That, to me, is kind of poor logic. Because I went up and I toured the property, and the neighbor that's complaining about this, between the building, this building, and the neighbor, they also have a very large metal, I guess it would be considered a hay barn perhaps, because it has no doors on it. In the middle of this big building is a huge pile of rusted farm equipment, barbecue grills. It's a huge eyesore. So that this neighbor who has this pile of eyesore right between the building and their house is complaining that his building, which is brand new, and if you look at the pictures, is very nicely done, is, you know, what he called harmful, because the neighbor who has all this eyesore is saying, I'm injured. So to me, that logic doesn't stand up.
Jim, then Bonnie?
Did the appellant know that the 651 square foot building was out of compliance when they added the 1,600 square foot building?
That is an excellent question, and the appellant's could probably let you know the answer to that question. I'm not sure.
Okay, I see Mr. Crowley showed up, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie?
Well, I was going to ask if the appellant and the folks who were opposed are here, and I saw them walk in, so that is helpful. Thank you. So I read through this, and I understand staff's recommendation. But I had a chance to go out and look at the property, and I, a couple of things. I looked at the website, right? And I, I know that you've got to, you know, I know that you've got to do building permits and the whole bit, and the importance of that. And then we have a lot of people moving to our area from other areas, wanting to have farmland and open space, which is great, right? I mean, we offer quality of life. So I went to the website, the ag website, to just click, to read it, right? So I just read it, and it says, which was so interesting to me, because if you just read it on face value, it doesn't say, click here to find out more. You must get a form for an exemption. It basically says, code exempts ag buildings and structures on FAE and RA zoned parcels of 10 acres or greater from building permit requirements when such buildings are used solely for agricultural purposes. And then it says, view agriculture building permit application forms under the permit tabs. But it says, no permit requirements for ag buildings. And then it says, for an application form. So if I don't have to fill out an application, I read it, and I go, great, my life's easier. I don't want to do extra paperwork. Nobody wants to do paperwork. And I can see why they didn't click on that button to get the exemption. So to me, that's, this is just not clear, and it's got to change, because I know that I want to go the short route, right? Nobody wants to take extra time to do government paperwork. I get that, right? But I can see why the Crowleys are like, good, don't have to do it, build it. So I, I hear that argument. And, and so I had an opportunity, I guess we should be asking questions before we deliberate. So I'll just leave it at that, because this has not yet been changed, correct? This is still the same website?
Correct, yes.
So I'm not going to ask questions. I'll wait until we deliberate, and then we'll go from there. Sorry.
Thanks, no problem. See no other comments? I, Amy, one question, I have a couple maybe. So just to be clear and for framing as we go forward, the setbacks 30 feet?
Yes.
For both buildings?
For both buildings.
Same for both buildings? So if the smaller, newer building were set back, and it would have to be set back an additional 20 feet?
The smaller building would have to be 20 feet, yes.
And the older, bigger building would have to be set back 25 feet?
Correct.
If I can still read that small print. And they would be directly to the east in this case, correct?
They would have to move to the east.
Correct. And that also happens to be farther away from the closest house or structure on the other property.
Correct.
And then I was told, I did a site visit also, and was told that the older, bigger building was built by the person who I understand still owns the property, but leases it to the people who reside in the residence on the other piece of property, the source of the complaint, and that they built that building collaboratively together and used collaboratively. Collaboratively, do you know if that's accurate?
So the smaller building is the older one?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I think we got a little flip-flop there. But there has been public testimony that the property owner adjacent to the property may have provided electricity to help construct the smaller building.
Great, thanks. Just wanted to have that as we got started with our testimony. And Bonnie, your light is still on. Okay, with that, at this point, we'll open it up to the public for comments. So if anyone would like to testify?
Actually, you want to have the appellant testify next?
Yes, thank you, Karen. You think I'd learn this stuff? So the appellant gets the first opportunity to come up and make your presentation. And just state your name for the record, please.
Good morning, good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Please accept my humble apologies. I was responsible for the directions that got us here, that took us someplace else first, and I apologize for our tardiness. It was completely my responsibility.
We're very nervous, sorry about that. So there's a couple of things. One is?
And then I think you have to state your name for the record. Yeah.
I'm sorry. Rick, I'm Rick Crowley, and?
And this is, I'm Corinne Crowley, and we own?
And just, you'll be given 10 minutes to make your presentation, since you are the appellant. And public comment will be for three minutes, but the property owner adjacent will also get the same amount of time.
Okay, great. So I'd like to trust on the presumption that you've already read the briefing, the notes that we've sent in, or didn't hear everything that Amy presented, but we understand the process. And Rick has some additional commentary that we'd like to support our arguments with.
Because not all of you came to the property. We weren't able to actually present some of the content and context. So I'm, and I hate to read, but I'm going to read because I get too verbose if I don't. And so I'll just stick with the facts. So Corinne and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on our behalf, and we hope to provide information that brings a clearer, more factually accurate picture of the events that led us to standing here in front of you all today. We bought the unincorporated property in hopes of making it a working farm with both livestock and crops. And we're looking into providing something that would leverage the interest in the agritourism as well. So we love it so much up here, we just felt like it'd be a cool thing to try to figure out how to share. So that's still one of our hopes and dreams. The verticality is significant, with more than 40% of the property being unbuildable, at least at 30% grade, or it's too close to the canal, which crosses our property five times and the siphon that feeds it. So it's, I didn't really realize it when I was looking at it, but it is a tough area, tough property to farm, especially on the south half. Corinne and I worked for a large tech company, and we were responsible for our website data and accuracy. We learned many things from this, including, one, we were legally liable for everything that was said and promised on the site. And that site happened to be Cisco certifications. So we were responsible for making sure people were certified to the degree that if they went out and installed a system based on our providing access to the website and the guidance of what they needed to do to get that, that the customer could feel a certain level of security in knowing that this person had the aptitude to be able to do that. We also were responsible for all the pricing. So if we pushed a bad price out there, we were then accountable to it. And so innately, we just developed this mindset that anything that was represented in the website was basically gospel for whatever company or business was representing it. And so the other part is, the other thing that we learned is, it significantly reduced the cost to Cisco to have this site up, because it allowed people, especially type A-type people, the opportunity to be able to solve their problems for themselves instead of having to go to the counter. And so we reduced by millions of dollars the cost of the internal infrastructure needed to support it, because you put it up there, and people could guide their way through how they could get things and get them done. We now understand that Placer County has been overwhelmed with requests for buildings, and that the people at the counter, you know, before even COVID hit, were under a lot of stress to get a lot of things moving. And so we felt it was just proper to go there. And so, and the ag building page, to understand what we needed to do, we went to the ag building page to understand that, and that's to the point. We felt, okay, ag buildings, kind of get it, as long as you're safe and secure. The ag commissioner had an opportunity to be able to review them to make sure it wasn't just something glommed together, it was going to be okay. Didn't realize that we were going to go into the planning, building, you know, for the variance until we got there. So we also worked with Billy Cox and the neighbors to let them know what we were doing. And I think you could see in the letter from Mike Cremply up the road, that we immersed ourselves in the neighborhood. We know all of the neighbors on Johnson. We get along with all of them with the exception of the current challenges we're having with the variance, with the neighbors next door. We know most of the neighbors on Godley. We immersed ourselves into the Auburn leadership program, and we really, you know, felt it was important to immerse ourselves into the community and into our neighborhoods to share and understand what we were doing. Plus, coming from the Bay Area, there's, there's been a stigma sometimes associated with it that makes some of the other neighbors nervous. So we just wanted to be forthcoming with what it was that we were doing, and how we were doing it, and what we were thinking about doing. So we built the building, and then when Corinne went to, came to Placer to get her business license, they stopped her getting that for our goat grazing business. And then Placer brought up, there were buildings on the property that they were unaware of, and they needed building permits for them. So?
So to answer your question, no, we did not know the 651 foot building that was on the property when we purchased it was out of sorts until we came to the counter to get my business license. You're welcome.
So we proactively approached the counter. We didn't want to wait. We had talked to a couple of the leaders, Keith Nesbit in leadership, and he said, just go and basically throw yourself on the sword and get, you know, get everything moving. And so that's what we did. What I didn't realize at the time was when they asked me to include the previous buildings and the Quonset hut, that the way it was going to come across to the neighbors was automatically, we had five violations. Now, if I was a neighbor that had been living there for five, seven, 40 years, I'd be a little freaked out that these people that just moved in next door and been there under a year had all of a sudden five violations on their property. And so I might be a little more vocal about resistance as well. And so I truly believe that's where things started going bad for us with the current neighbors. So the process has caused us major stress, both to my wife and I, both financially and with the opportunity to continue to move forward. We're, we feel we're more than a year behind now, based on the fact that we're missing the opportunities to be able to build our home and, you know, get all the other things associated with that done. Overall, it's made us pause and ask if we did make the right decision. But it's the people that keep bringing us back. So outside of the renters and owners next door, and all of the people that we've met in leadership, and even the people like yourself that have come to the property, that's the energy that we needed to regenerate to get us back into, you know, wanting to make this all work. We tried through Paul Bishop, who was the previous owner, who had a good relationship with Billy, and through the California Agricultural Mediation Program to work out the challenge this created with the neighbors. And Paul was unable to get Billy to commit to actually meet, to talk about some level of mediation, whether it was a lot line adjustment, or us paying them cash to kind of settle this thing up, and?
I want to state that a little bit more with fact. Paul invited him to lunch. Let's do lunch on Tuesday. Okay. And Billy didn't show up. Billy didn't respond on Tuesday. These are friends that have been friends, neighbors for 25 years, men that have worked side by side on their farms for a long time. And Paul reached out to an old relationship to ask for common sense conversation about this, and Billy wouldn't have anything to do with it. So then we used our access to the legal services through the Farm Bill to establish mediation with Mark and Natalia, the renters on the property. Multiple phone calls, multiple emails, left unresponded to for any attempts of our mediation.
The other part was, through the mediation, Janet reached out to Billy originally, and Billy said the same thing to them that he said to us consistently, which is, ultimately, and this is her quote, ultimately, he didn't feel he should be a party to mediation, since he has one foot out the door, so to speak, and would be completely divested of his interests in 30 to 60 days. And that was in September 24th of 2020. So they really gave it their best effort to try to get it done.
We did.
And we did.
We gave it our best effort.
Our belief is all, this could have been avoided if the Quonset hut was not originally included in the five violations, if it got down to four, and if those were clearly spelled out, and if the NID variances had been noted in the email or the notice that was sent to the neighbors as already approved by NID. That would have removed everything down to two violations, which were the original building setback, and then our building that we built based on that. And we also believe all this could have been avoided had the Placer website been more clear and not stated we were exempt from Placer building code requirements. We were asked at the Planning Commission to, if, by the chair, if we would be interested in taking a look at the site, which I put a few hours into. One of the things I did was I searched for building code requirements on the Placer site, and those three words, building code requirements, only appear in that paragraph under the ag buildings. It doesn't appear anyplace else to define what building code requirements are and what you might be not getting if you just kind of lump it in, because many people have said, well, variance doesn't fall under that. But in a layman's mind, if I go to the counter and I'm applying for a permit, all of the things that are required for that permit to happen fall under building permit requirements in my mind. So we're basically throwing ourselves on our sword and asking for an approval of the variance to avoid the $35,000, that's the minimum quote, cost of moving the building. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Let me ask if anyone has questions of you up here. I see none at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we'll give 10 minutes to the complainant that was the source of the code violations and the variance request. If they are here or would like to call in.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Oh, can you hear me? Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Billy Cox, president and owner of 561 Johnson Drive.
Go ahead with your comments, and you have 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, I didn't really start this process. It was started by the county, when they said that they had to have permits. And then I was not aware, when Paul built his building originally, that it wasn't permitted or that you needed setbacks. I, I just never checked into it. It wasn't a concern of mine. And so, and they made a comment that Paul asked me to go to lunch. Well, he did, I agree with that. I was, I was visiting. I was visiting California for, I had about 10 days back there. And he wanted to talk to me about my boat in Sacramento and my boat in North Carolina. He really didn't even say anything about the property. So I didn't know it was a lunch meeting about the property. He never mentioned it. He reached out a couple of times and kept talking about the boat. And I said, that's great. And he never talked about the property. I agree with the one lady that there's all kinds of crap underneath the sheds right now. The main reason is, is I'm getting rid of everything and, and in the process. But because of COVID, I've been kind of stuck out here in North Carolina. I haven't been able to get back to the ranch and get, take all that stuff out. Otherwise, it never looked like that. It was always clean and neat. My, the problem, the biggest problem I have with the variance is that, you know, we're not going, if there's a fire or something, we got to protect it because it's on our side of the, you know, it's five feet from my property line. He has no way of doing fire protection. So it's kind of my, lays on my responsibility. But I look at it this way. It's the county's rules. It's not my rules. If you guys don't want to enforce your rules, that's up to you as supervisors. But you can't say to me that I am causing, I'm not the one that built the buildings. I'm not the one that encouraged the buildings to be built. I've never even talked to the Crowley's but one time, and that's when we were doing work on the dirt road. They've never, they have my number. They could have called me anytime. They've never spoken to me. Yes, they asked for a mediator. And I, I told the mediator, I said, "The fight isn't with me. It is with the county. The county is the one that said they have to have these permits. The county's the ones that said that these buildings need to be moved back 30 feet. I didn't say that. The county has. I'm just saying, if that's a rule, I abide by the rules of the county. I think everyone else should. If you don't want to have the rules, don't have the rules. I'm fine with that. If you want to say they can break the rules, then you can open up that dam yourself because then you're going to have every other agriculture person saying, hey, I need that building closest to the, to my fence line. I've been involved in agriculture since 1970. I've had farms in Orland, California, in Glen County. I've had this ranch in, in Placer since 1998. I've raised sheep. I've been part of the agriculture community, Placer grown. I understand. I've worked with Western Growers Trade Association. I understand agriculture. And I understand the need for it to move forward. However, this is not a fight with me and the county or we and the neighbors. This is the Crowley's not getting a permit, not following the rules. I'm just saying, it's up to you as supervisors. It's up to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission agreed that they needed to get permits and that they wouldn't be allowed a variance. That wasn't me. That was, that was the county. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Let me ask my colleagues if they have any questions of you. And I see none at this time. Thank you. So now we will open it up to the public so anybody can call in or testify for three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Paul Bishop, and I have had an interest in the subject property for about 50 years. I listened to Mr. Cox's testimony and I think he just forgot that in fact I did talk to him about this request for a variance and that if he would drop any objection to it, they'd have no trouble getting that variance. And his response was, I couldn't do that to my renter. Apparently, he had committed to the renter that he would oppose this. But we did have a conversation about it. As far as the smaller building was concerned, I built that myself. I thought it was exempt. I built that, I think about maybe 2005, four, five, somewhere in there. And it was primarily to keep a cover for my tractor and a little shop to work in. It was just a place for me to go and experience the outdoors because I was raised on a farm and I didn't live well in the city. But my wife had said I was getting too old to have that anymore and I needed to sell it. And that's how I came to sell it to the Crowley's. But this whole situation seems a little confusing to me. I read the, the letter that, that renter sent and said he was really offended that the Crowley's had reduced his objections to triviality, that it was all about view. Well, that's the only thing I heard him complain about before this latest letter. So I, I don't, I don't understand really where they're coming from, but I see my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can now. Thank you.
My name is Mark Gromis. I'm the current tenant at 5610 Johnson Drive. So many different things were said, so I kind of tried to address them in a timeline. They built the, the metal building without any discussion with Billy or I. I think they decided that we would be a help to them once they decided, knew that the building couldn't be there. So they decided to let me in on a few things. They knew they built that building in violation. They said they were hoping that you guys would think both buildings were always there and they could always get around it. And so they kind of approached it in that way. And they said that they would need a letter from us. And I told them that Billy would be the one that they would need a letter from because he was the actual property owner. But I said he wouldn't go for that because I know he wouldn't want it there. He would want it to be where it would be up to code and everything and nothing right on the property line because it diminishes our property value. I told them that then. And so when they say it's been trivialized down to a view, doesn't make any sense to me. And they still asked me to write a letter and said it would benefit me that if we had the building side by side because we also have sheep and we can say we're a business together. So they keep trying to use loopholes and after the fact things to get what they want. And none of it is, it's, I could see the way the panel reacted and everything that it's working in their favor. But they knew that they violated it when they started and they told me specifically. And then when, you know, Suzanne mentioned the structures that we have, which are Billy Cox's, and they're not permanent, which theirs are. Those are going to be gone. And then there would be nothing between my house and that building, which nobody would want when you move here. So not only are they diminishing from me, but I would also have trouble selling the property when somebody goes and sees a building right there, which is in violation of what normally would be. And so it's injurious in that fact. And she said, I don't understand how it can be injurious. And it's because it diminishes our property value. If it didn't, they wouldn't state that there might be a solution such as paying us or something else because they understand that it does something against us. And so the other thing is I reached out to the local fire department because all this educated me. I didn't know anything. Another thing that they said is the neighbors wouldn't have said anything. Well, we didn't know anything until the county came. I spoke to all the neighbors myself too. And they were, well, we weren't aware of this. We weren't aware of that. But it makes you educate yourself. And then we realized we had a, a hand in the fight and we decided to make a comment. And that was the first time I did. And so when I spoke to the local fire department, they said, any building closer to your property would always be a fire hazard. And then not only that, would it be unable to maintain a 100-foot defensible space, which is required in the state of California? Because it's only five feet. It's like Billy said, it would be up to us to maintain that. And they suggested a mural or shrubbery because how would they address my concerns such as fire or not? They would just trivialize it down to that because it's easier to say, well, that's all we're trying to fix. And then if they're using it as ag, there would be chemicals involved and we just had a new baby. Those could leak onto the property being that close. I, I, you know, when they built the building, not only is all that junk Billy's, but it's also, they threw some of the stuff from, that was Paul's onto our property when they built that. And I told Billy that.
Could you please wrap up your comments?
Sure. I'm finished.
Thank you.
No further, no further public comment.
Thanks, Megan. Okay, so that completes our testimony. And I'll open it up first to questions from my colleagues, if they have any at this point in time. And I have one, so I'll start. Amy, do you know the distance between the property line and the closest structure on the adjacent building to the Crowley's property?
So the closest structure to the Crowley's property is a structure that has been brought up several times that, I guess from public testimony, it sounds like it's Billy Cox's structure, which is, it looks to me like a couple of shipping containers with a cover over it. And I'm not sure how close that is. It's in close proximity to the adjacent property.
Do you have a best guess footwise?
I would say between 20 or 30 feet.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. I was out there also on that.
Could you clarify? I'm sorry. There's, how, what's the distance between the property line and the neighbor's house?
It's about 145 feet.
And then there's also some, there's also a structure in between?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Yeah, so both of those actually were my questions. So you covered them both? Thanks. Bonnie, who have our next?
No, that was my question.
That was it?
It was the distance between the homes. Actually, and my, my second question is, and I don't know this, and I don't know if the renter can answer the question, but the, the building was being built, what, a year or so ago, correct? The new building, right? And at that time, were there any concerns with that being, building being built by the neighbor? I don't know.
You mean expressed by the neighbor?
Expressed by the neighbor because the building's going up. I, we're doing some work in my yard and my neighbor's watching every move and he's asking questions and we're, you know, we're telling him about it. And, and so my question is, did the neighbor bring up concerns during the process with the building being built where it is? And I don't know if the neighbor is there, Mark, you're the renter, if you can answer that question or?
Can you still hear me?
Is that Mr. Cox?
That wasn't the original structure they built. They put on two storage containers with a roof structure comparable to what we have. And then that blew over the first year and the roof, you know, they couldn't repair it. And so then after that, they put up the metal structure really fast. It wasn't, they, they were like, oh, we're just using this for storage. The reason they built the metal building was the county came out and looked at something else on the property and they pointed at their trailer and said, who lives in that? And they said, oh, we do. And they said, well, you can't if you don't have a permanent structure here. So they built that building to hide their trailer. They specifically told me that. And I failed to mention it because they've said so many lies about what I've done and my involvement. And it's hard to not be emotional about it because I'm like Billy is, we didn't bring up the fight. You guys asked our opinion. You posted something and said, here's public comment. And that's when we gave our public comment. And then at the time they built that structure, I was having work done here and a contractor said, the county's going to see that and they're going to take up issue with it, which is exactly what happened. And like I said, this process educated me. I didn't realize I had a voice and I could just go somewhere and say something. I'm not a complaining person. I kind of am busy and go about my life. My wife was pregnant. We just had a baby. And so once it became my public, could, my voice could be heard is when I exactly said it and I educated myself and learned even more how hazardous it is to be.
Thank you. Did you have others?
No.
Cindy, then Suzanne.
Amy, I'm going to ask you, but I may ask EJ, because I want to go back up to the higher level of why we have setbacks. You know, what is the purpose we hope to achieve with setbacks and, and maybe we could talk a bit at that high level first and then go into the specifics.
Good morning. EJ Valdi for the record with Planning Services Division. So the answer to that question is three words, light, air, and open space between properties. And then also the safety factor.
Great. Thank you. I wanted it to be a simple answer. So thank you. And I think it's important because I live next to somebody who has avoided his setbacks for many years. And it does create a property value impact, no matter what your thoughts are on, on the individuals involved. So I want to say to the individuals involved, we all want to treat others the way we want to be treated. And we want the county code to mean something when we have setbacks. So I'll just preface that. And then Amy, as far as any other, if we look at light, air, and I'm sorry?
Open space.
Open space. Are there any other solutions that could be offered here? Because I'm always one to try to, to find a middle ground and find solutions that try to avoid impacts to somebody else's property. Because I'm sure if Mr. Cox turned around and wanted something built within a side setback, now we're going to have a, some issues. So are there any other, or EJ's coming back up?
Yes, I would go back to the, the deliberation at the Planning Commission and what was spoken at the Planning Commission about a compromise that was brought up and deliberated on about allowing the structure to remain that was built there prior to the Crowley's ownership. And then moving the new building to meet the setback requirement. There was a four, three vote at the commission. So you, you know, there was a, a good conversation about that. So, you know, if there was going to be a compromise, you know, that was one that was on the table at the Planning Commission.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Suzanne.
Yeah, I think that a four to three vote by the Planning Commission kind of is not a very decisive vote either. There was a lot of concern as to whether that could have been a possible resolution, don't you think? I mean, it's, it'd be different if it was six to one or something like that, or seven to zero. But something that concerned me was the, the actual property owner said he didn't have anything to do with it and, and everything. But the findings of the zoning administrators based his findings on the fact that the neighbor said it was going to be harmful to them. But now he says it was, the fight wasn't about him. So I'm, I'm confused.
Well, I do think our job is to uphold our standards to protect everybody's rights. So we would protect Mr. Cox's rights, just like we would protect the Crowley's rights for any neighbors that would build in their setback. So that's, I think, maybe what the zoning administrator.
We're not putting complaint, you know,
No, no, I agree.
non-trial here. We're trying to talk about what we do about our
Right, right. I, I agree. But the concern is that here is the agricultural, the website. And like Bonnie said, it actually, all it says is that if a building is built on parcels of 10 acres or greater, then they are exempt from building permit requirements when such buildings are used solely for agricultural purposes. So are we being completely clear to everybody? Because these folks moved up from the Bay Area and they probably all live in very small parcels, if at all. And to come up to an area like this, they're depending on websites to help them out with what they're trying to do. So I agree, but is it being onerous on them for now, what
Right.
we're trying to do?
And I think that's the debate we're all having. I think that the thinking I have anyway is that obviously I've, I've been in and around the county for a long time and in public service. And there's a difference between building and zoning and many other requirements that go into buying a piece of property, doing your due diligence, and making sure you understand a new business, a new industry and all those things. So I, I'm sympathetic to both sides in this situation. I'm just saying, there's a lot to it besides just building codes. So making sure you understand everything that go into.
Jim?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been to the site twice and looked at it. I can understand Crowley's maybe misinterpretation or misunderstanding about the requirements. But knowing that the older, the older building was already there, it would be an assumption on my part that it'd be okay to put the building where it is, the new building. And so I'm comfortable with granting the appeal. I think, I don't see who gains. If the adjacent property owner, I don't see what they gain. They say that it's a site distance. I don't see that. And it's harmful to the Crowley's to have to go back and spend the extra money to move a building 25 feet. So I, I would support granting the variance.
Let me go ahead and make my comments at this point, just to help maybe frame it, get us to a particular place. So from my perspective, what's important here in following our variance standards and custom
customs as well, and trying to find a solution, include the fact that we have to start with a platform that there are some unique or special attributes as it relates to the property that might call out for exceptions, a variance. And I visited the site also, and I think you can make that argument, noting that all of these things would be debatable in a particular individual's mind, but certainly, the property is steep off of the top ridge quickly, and very steep at that point. You have the NID ditch, and you also have the pipeline. And then I think, if we had a magic wand, we need to consider what we would vote if there was nothing out there in the first place, and what would be accomplished by implementing the specific letter of the county law. And in this case, it would be moving two buildings, significant variance percentage to the east. But as it relates to the most significant impact, the visual impact on the adjoining neighbors to the west, I don't, I don't see it changing much. So then the question is equity served by, by doing something that extreme? So those are my thoughts going in. Sure happy to help us craft something that we can support. Bonnie?
I appreciate your perspective, and, and that's helpful. You know, I heard the, the gentleman say we'll enforce the rules, which, right, we do need to have rules, and those are important as we try to, to govern and, and deal with property rights. But I do have questions about it. I think, to your point, there could be some property exceptions based where the property is, what was already there previous, which made an assumption that, hey, it was fine to build along that line if somebody didn't know. I, I hate to see, I hate to see neighbors like this, right? It's so frustrating, and, and nobody wins with it. I hate to see people have to spend a whole lot more money just to move something a little bit, when somebody could have made a mistake, or there's an existing use that made it seem like it would be appropriate. So, you know, I've been a little bit torn on this, and especially because the neighbors are sort of doing the, this and that thing. But I think there are exceptions, and I really looked at the view as well, because as I, I can understand, if I've got a beautiful view, I do not want it, I don't want it impeded. But I, I had an opportunity to look, and it's, from what I can see, that, that building is not impeding the view. It's a beautiful piece of land, a beautiful piece of property that both owners have, looking out over the oak trees. It's gorgeous, but I don't see that building impeding that view. And I, in this case, I, I don't think, especially with the website not being clear, I just think that this is a time where we, we, whatever, we move towards what the Crowley's have asked because of the variety of circumstances.
Okay. Let's do Cindy, and then Suzanne, and then Jim.
I think the one issue that I haven't heard anyone speak to, and that I wanted to make sure we addressed or considered, is anything to do with fire safety. And if there's any situation that we could improve fire safety and protection from the adjacent property owner. Does, does the one building in fact have a 300 gallon tank in it of diesel fuel, and then, or not? I'm unclear on that. And maybe the appellants can answer that, or...
And/or maybe staff look like...
Yeah. Okay. Sorry to make you walk up. Sorry to make you walk up. Looks like you have an injured foot.
... to answer your question, we do have a diesel tank on the property. It is empty, and we're moving it once we get our breath exhaled from this particular situation, because it's not where we want it, or if we even want it. So yes, it's there when we bought the property. It's currently empty, and we're gonna be moving it.
Okay.
You had a secondary question?
No, no, that was it. And then I would look to staff on my second question, which is there anything that could be required if we, if we move to, move forward with this and grant the appeal on fire defensible space on the backside of this building, or Supervisor Holmes?
I just want to make you aware that the Crowley's have goats, and the property adjacent has sheep. And so it's pretty apparent that they would have some defensible space.
Right.
That actually is a fuel load practice.
I, I know. I was looking, and, and I was well aware of that, but the trees themselves, and are they within distance? That's what I wasn't clear on, and whether they could be ignited at all, so...
EJ, do you have some, something to add?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, I mean, once they obtain a building permit, obviously the building department would look at any, you know, necessary fire codes that need to be in place, so just to add to that.
Thanks. Suzanne?
Yeah, my one comment is that we're talking about enforcing the law, but granting variances is within the law.
Absolutely.
Jim?
I just want to make the motion that we approve the variance.
Okay. Can I make some suggestions first?
Of course you can.
For the variance to be approved, findings need to be made, and I've heard a lot of discussion from the board about the variance to the side setback. But there are two variances here. The other variance is to the NID canal. I don't know if any board member wants to make any kind of comment so that we can incorporate that, because the process here would be that if you want to grant the appeal, we're gonna have to continue this in order to make sequoia findings, and to articulate the findings that are required under both the government code and the Planning Commission to support the grant of the variances, and to also identify any necessary conditions of approval. So if there are no comments about the NID canal, I do believe, I saw something in the staff report that NID was supportive of the reduction, we can stick with that, but I wanted to give that opportunity to the board to make any comments about those particular setbacks.
Thanks, Karen.
So that, if NID approves the change in the setbacks, then that should be sufficient, correct? We don't have to...
We can go with that, if that's, that's what you want to leave. I just wanted to point out that there are two different variances for both buildings, side setback and to the NID canal.
Then for process, Jim, maker of the motion, do you concur with...
Well, actually, if I could sort of insert myself here, first, I'd recommend that you close the public hearing.
Okay, thanks.
With a motion.
Public hearing is closed?
Okay.
With a motion? Did you say?
What's that?
Is that adequate, or did you...
That's adequate.
Okay.
Then, here's my suggestion, if you don't mind, Supervisor Holmes, is that you grant the appeal, and direct staff to return with a sequoia determination, with findings to support the grant of the variances consistent with board comments, and any necessary conditions of approval, and ask the clerk to set the date and time certain for the return for this variance for final action. So this is actually a tentative action, and you will make your final action when you, when it comes back to you.
Did the clerk get that? Okay, then I'll make that motion.
And we can...
County councils.
And then if there is... Second. So motion, Holmes, second. Jones, and Megan, do we have a date?
We do. So we're gonna go with March 9th at 9:15 a.m.
March 9th, 9:15. Okay, let's do, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, my further discussion would be, I understand, you know, I think where the votes are going on this, and I just, I want staff to be aware, I appreciate the hard work and the Planning Commission's efforts on this, because in fact, our, our codes and our ordinances are written for a reason. And so I, you know, I want to thank you for your, your diligence on this and bringing it forward. I know it's not easy. You'd rather be the ones to be able to make things, people feel good, and when the board turns around and makes it. It's because we do think there's extenuating circumstances in this situation why a variance to that code could be justified. So I just, I thank you for your efforts on this.
Great comment, Cindy. Okay, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Gore?
Aye.
Holmes?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes. Thank you. We will take up our 11 o'clock timed item. It is exactly 11 o'clock, which is update on our proposed 2021 redistricting process and timeline, Jane.
Good morning, Chair Wiegand, members of the board. Pleased to be here this morning, Jane Christensen from the County Executive Office, as a follow-up to your January 26th discussion with regard to the county's 2021 redistricting process and timeline. As you know, just a bit on redistricting background, the county is required to redistrict its supervisory districts every 10 years, per the latest census. This is governed by California Elections Code, which establishes basic redistricting criteria and process to guide the board's efforts, as well as recent California state laws, which really underscored the need for these processes to be data-driven and transparent to our citizens. As we advise the board, just a few days after your January 26th meeting discussion, we've learned further that the U.S. Census may not reach us until as late as September 1st, which again severely compresses our 2021 timeline, so we do have a few adjustments to the timeline that the board did approve on January 26th. And again, this is a follow-on to your discussion at that time. At that time, you specifically articulated two potential process options for our redistricting effort, looking at, while there are a number of alternatives, and while the board has historically elected to administer the redistricting process itself, there seem to be board consensus around two alternatives. One, an advisory redistricting commission, which is a more formal process established by resolution or ordinance, again, plac or residence only. State law does not prescribe a lot of requirements, other than that, it cannot be electeds or elected staff, which clearly have a conflict of interest, but the board may impose additional restrictions or requirements, and it is mandatory that we comply, again, with this state code. The board also discussed a suggestion raised by Supervisor Gore of an ad hoc committee. This would be a more informal effort wherein citizens would work together with our CEDRA and clerk recorder staff to craft alternatives for subsequent public review. Again, we would recommend that these certain basic criteria be met, that they be plac or residents for at least 30 days. It would be helpful if folks have some working understanding of demographics or GIS, which are the data sets that really govern this process. We would, of course, look for countywide representation, and this affords members of the public a more substantive role in, again, the drawing of these potential future district lines. It's important to note that neither of these processes obviates the public review process that we would still do, it's just another alternative for more robust public involvement in the effort going forward. With regard to selecting the members, you've got two resolutions before you, one to establish an advisory commission, and one to establish the ad hoc committee. In one case, it would be the board approving establishment of this commission, in another, it would be the board approving the criteria, as it was discussed, that staff might select members of the ad hoc committee. The process, again, is defined by the local jurisdiction, defined by you, and among staff, as we were crafting, bringing this item back to you, we thought that rather than advertise, which has been a challenge for jurisdictions like Roseville, we could potentially turn to an existing body if the board so chose, such as the 2019 Charter Review Committee, or the Planning Commission, again, bodies that are already established, bodies that already have an administrative infrastructure to kind of help guide them in their efforts, who have an understanding of the Brown Act and other requirements, again, in order to kind of keep this process moving with this compressed timeline. But of course, there are other options as well. The timeline, this is, as you see, has some overlap, simply because the indeterminate nature on when we will get the census data, we historically have gotten it in late March, early April. We were hurrying, I'm sorry, on January 26th, we had heard perhaps as late as June, a few days later, we heard it may not be completed until July 31st, which then goes to the state. The state has 30 days to make its adjustment and review, meaning it would not come to us until September 1st. While that is, of course, concerning, I think we can take heart from the fact that we do already have preliminary data. This is from the 2019 American Community Survey, which is also a U.S. Census product. So we can begin this work with this preliminary data, which is only a year off, get as close to final as possible, and then refresh it, once we have the 2020 final data in hand. So we would expect, again, this preliminary review, as well as community input and review to happen over the next six-plus months, craft and inform preliminary map alternatives that we would then bring forward to the board and the public in late summer, early fall. Again, along the way, conducting the requisite for public hearings that are required by law. All of this culminates, of course, with a deadline for final board adoption by November 15th, and that is so we have 30 days to be effective before the state's December 15th deadline, which it needs to have in order to set the table for 2022 election filing. So that's our timeline at a glance. The decision before you today is essentially which process would the board like to advocate for with regard to our redistricting effort? A commission, which is Resolution A included in your packet, an ad hoc committee, which is Resolution B in your packet, what are the board's thoughts on selection and appointment of members, again, by the board or by staff, as was suggested on January 26th, and approval of the timeline? So I will bring it back to the timeline, since I suspect that is the primary concern, and then leave it open for board discussion. And I know Clayton Cook from County Council is also here with me to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thanks, Jane. So great presentation. And the first thing we will take up is the timeline, if that's acceptable to everybody, and if it's not, of course, we'll do whatever three of us want. But Jim, you have your line on second.
So we need to make a motion on approving the timeline, or...
That's, yes.
That is correct. The timeline, the board approved on January 26th, was amended once we learned about the later census data, so we want to replace it with this new timeline, which again reflects that delay in our proposed process, just so the board has its fingerprints on the process, as well as, again, any body that may be part and parcel of this redistricting process.
Thanks. Clayton, did you, Karen, do you have anything to add to that, or is that adequate?
I'll make a motion on the timeline, so we get that piece of this done.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, but first, I want to open it up to the public. So we have motion, Gustafson, second, Holmes, I think. And now we'll take public comment just on the timeline at this point in time, please.
Chairman, there's no public comment.
No public comment. So with that, then, what is the pleasure of the board? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And next, we will take up the advisory or public process by which the board chooses to go forward, and Jim?
Yeah, I, seeing that we have this compressed timeline, and we probably won't get the information back from the state within 30 days, once it's, once we have the census, I don't see why we wouldn't appoint the Planning Commission, since they already have the apparatus in place, they're, they have all the Brown Act rules, and they also are engaged in public, you know, the public policy process. So I don't see why we wouldn't appoint the, the Planning Commission. It would save a lot of work from trying to find people that would serve on an ad hoc committee. So that'd be my recommendation.
Cindy, and then Suzanne.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know my line was on, but I will, I will go. So I've thought a lot about our last discussion, and I've had a lot of input, a lot of input from community leaders and people from both sides of every issue. And then I've sought out a lot of input, and I was coming back around to not even having a committee, and going back to the wisdom of, of a couple of you, that, you know, it's worked in the past, the way it's been done. But, you know, given that, and I want to hear public input on this, I want to be sure that any public process includes all the MACs and potentially town hall forums, because a lot of people don't necessarily participate in a MAC, we have those. And then the other idea I'd had is, even though... And then the other idea I'd had is even though I have great confidence in our county staff, if it also would help their knowledge base if planning staff from the various cities in the jurisdictions were included in some sort of advisory role to the staff, not part of our ad hoc process, but just to make sure that they're aware of what's going on because they'll be going through their own districting, they'll be very familiar with neighborhoods and the demographics and the population, and again, it might just be that extra outreach that we've been talking about and wanting that openness and transparency. And to Jim's point, I kind of arrived back at that idea although I'm still open to hearing other suggestions that the Planning Commission is already vetted, they've already shown themselves in public in making decision processes and filled out their forms. They're the people we rely on heavily for planning decisions and upholding our statutes. So I think there's merit there, there's also merit in others participating, so I'm just, I'm open to hearing what others have to say.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Yes, I'm going to probably argue against the ad hoc because the reasoning behind my feeling is that both the Charter Review Committee and the Planning Commissioners have been appointed by this body, and in order to really step away from a public perception that we're trying to have some measure of control here, if we all decide that we want to appoint the body that we've already appointed in the past. And the other thing too is that because you're on the Charter Review Committee, I don't think it makes you an expert in GIS or any of the issues that we really need personnel with some knowledge. And so, but in addition to that, you know, when they passed AB 849 which they called the Fair Maps Act, the reason that they, they did this is because they wanted to transform how we conduct local redistricting. California is a leader in redistricting for state and national offices, and they have been for a number of years. We need to bring the best practices from our state redistricting process to local redistricting, including the criteria that prioritize keeping our neighborhoods whole and requiring that maps be open to public comment before they can be adopted. Too many communities are left out of local decision-making with the same group of regulars either attending council or board meetings, and so redistricting is the opportunity to change that precedent. And 849 will allow our community have a more participatory role in redistricting, providing greater transparency and enhancing community trust. Our democracy is stronger when we are more involved, and so that's why I think we really need to have the community involved. I support having at least two members from each district. There are guidelines in Assembly Bill 1267 which was signed by the governor. This is a great roadmap for redistricting. I mean, it lays out requirements for people such as that they should not have been in elected office, should not be people that are intending to run for elected office. I think being a registered voter in Placer County is probably a good idea since it's going to affect registered voters most and people running for office, but transparency, 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 I don't think it's wise for us to appoint a group of people that we've already appointed.
Bonnie?
Thank you. Supervisor Jones, I appreciate your comments, and you know, I was originally the one who suggested ad hoc, but as I thought about it more, to the point of the Voting Rights Act and the desire for transparency and not having elected officials have this influence on jeremandering, right? So I, I think we should have a separate advisory commission, I think that that would be prudent to do, and I thought about the Planning Commission Charter Review Commission, you know, that's a nice suggestion, but we appointed those folks, and I might have only appointed my planning commissioner and the at-large, but we as a board approved each of those commission seats. And I think we need an arms' distance from those folks to allow for a public process and not have it look like, oh, well, these are just the supervisors' people and they're just gonna, you know, make it look good for the supervisors. So I agree Supervisor Jones, and I think that what we can do is a separate advisory commission. I would recommend, I think two per district is way too many. I think one per district plus two at-large is fine, because when you've got a large group in a short amount of time, I think that's fine because what we will get is plenty of public process and plenty of public input. These meetings will be open to the public, and then we'll do town halls and outreach. So I think that in the shorter amount of time, I think a smaller group would be advisable, five plus two at-large. And it's pretty clear that what's needed for the advisory redistricting, you know, no electeds, no elected staff, I would probably include no elected family members. And, and we want people that are interested in the process, and I don't want it to, I don't want us to have the same restrictions the city of Roseville had, and they're having a hard time finding anybody, enough people to serve on their commission, right? And, and people have the right, I mean, we have a First Amendment right to participate in the process and be involved, but I think people who are directly connected to us as elected officials should not be included, or, you know, members who are electeds of special districts or central committees, those folks who are already elected, just keep it away from the electeds and encourage the community to participate.
Suzanne, your light is still on.
Yeah, I wanted to comment one more time. I like the way you outlined everything, the fact that we could start working on things now just because we won't have the final numbers, and really if you look at the map, it looks like we have anywhere from one to maybe as many as six months to get this thing working full speed up to when we get the final numbers. So I really like that, and I don't think we should consider ourselves as being in this really crunch for one or two or three months because we do have more than that. In addition to that, I was going to say that the state of California uses the auditors to select the panel, and if our auditor would be willing, I think it would be a good way to have them help us select applicants that apply, but that, that's not for me to say. And then the last thing I was going to say is I like all of the things that Bonnie is outlining as far as restrictions go, and this, like I said, this one roadmap which is AB 1276 really goes in detail through all those things about who members can be, whether they, you know, should be voting members, I think, that they can't have switched party affiliation. Of course, this is, this is nonpartisan, but although it's nonpartisan, should we consider having one Republican and one Democrat? I don't know. It's not a partisan board, and we're not elected bipartisan, but you all know that your parties are supporting you and pushing you, and the party that you're not registered with are the ones that slam doors in our face. So if you want to seem completely fair, maybe we consider having one person from each party and one from each district. And the last thing I was going to say as far as Roseville having a difficult time finding members to serve on it, don't forget Placer County, we have, what, 400,000 people, and how many of those are voters and eligible for this? We have a lot larger pool to select from than Roseville does.
Jim, did you have another comment?
Yeah, it seems that this is getting to be too cumbersome with Republicans and Democrats. Maybe we should just have people that are no party preference. But would you have someone that has already served, a former elected official? Would you have someone that wants to apply for the Planning Commission? Would they be allowed to apply for this? I mean, I don't know how we're gonna wean out the people that we want, that they want to put on this commission. It's just gonna be very difficult, and so I don't understand how, how we can do that. And again, I go back to the, I think the best, best approach would be to have the Planning Commission. It's someone that represents, each Planning Commissioner represents a supervisor, and then we have two at-large, and so I don't know why that wouldn't work more efficiently.
Bonnie?
To your point, I agree, it shouldn't be super complicated. The requirements under the Advisory Redistricting Commission actually have some requirements, and they're not too stringent, really Placer County residents only, no electeds or elected staff, and then we could have some additional requirements, right? So we don't have to have a lot of additional requirements. I certainly wouldn't want it to be all Republicans or all Democrats, but, you know, regardless of party, what we want are residents who are gonna think about what's gonna be fair and represent areas of interest, right? That's really what we're looking for, is people who are just gonna be fair and looking at boundaries and precincts and cities to put together a reasonable-sized districts. So I really want to advocate for smaller, not two per, just because it's so much work when you've got a larger group of people in a short amount of time. And I think that we could do an application and find somebody from each district, and maybe the qualification is somebody who might have a little bit more experience, right? Maybe some planning experience, maybe GIS experience, it doesn't have to be, right? But maybe it could just be somebody with a little bit more experience in that area, but I don't want it to be super restrictive to me, because I don't want it to be as complicated, but I, I feel like I need to have an arms-length from the Planning Commission. It feels like it's a group that we've already approved, which is great, and they do good work, but I feel like an arms' distance would be better.
And we don't always agree with them for our lists.
That is very true.
If I could with respect to the comments, just provide some commentary, and that is the Advisory Redistricting Commission, there are requirements set forth in statute as to what those people can't be, and those people can't be an elected official, a family member, a staff member, or paid campaign staff of an elected official. So that's the official requirement. In AB 1276, there are other requirements for the independent redistricting commissions that are much more involved, but those are the only ones that are required for the Advisory Redistricting Commission. Now, there is discretion in the statute to allow for the board to put more requirements on there if they so choose. And then one other thing I just wanted to touch on since it came up is that the draft maps that are being prepared, they can't be released until the census data is actually received. So while we, we do have six months of lead-up time, we won't actually be able to release those draft maps until whenever we get the census data, maybe early September, maybe late September, and then, so it does compress that timeframe, at least with respect to the draft maps.
And does that, can I, can I ask a clarifying question? That means that those cannot be released even to the commission?
Right, cannot be released.
Because that's a public process, so they would have a short amount of timeframe. So if they sign up, they have to know that pretty much September is when their meetings are, and they'd have to commit to that timeframe, which I think is very important to note.
Very helpful Clayton. I'm gonna open this up to the public sometime, but Jim, do you, do you have something else going?
Yeah, I just wondered if the role that the county clerk and recorder of elections has, and he has to look at these, does need to see where all the precincts are in the special districts, that's gonna take some time as well.
Yes, we have mapped out a process which is really a partnership between CEDRA as well as the Clerk Recorder's Office. Redistricting is a bit of an art and a science. I think the science resides in CEDRA to essentially draw population-equivalent districts based on the census data, and then it's finessed essentially by the Clerk Recorder to make sure that we preserve communities of interest, that it aligns with school districts, that we're not ending up splitting communities in any way that is adverse to the voters themselves.
So the county clerk would be working in conjunction with the CEDRA on this?
That is correct. As I mentioned on January 26th and is in the staff report for today, we have a multidisciplinary staff team from CEO, from council, from CEDRA, from the Clerk Recorder's Office, from IT, because we're using GIS data, and they're very helpful in helping us translate that data into map alternatives, again in partnership with CEDRA and the Clerk Recorder.
Thank you. Great, great question. I think that refreshing of information is really valid as we go further, and I'll just quickly provide some overview thoughts I have before we receive public comments since everyone else has. But as I mentioned last time, I think at the end of the day, what's important to me is that the board be the one to make the decision, so that narrows down the options. I'm receptive to different opportunities as relates to receiving more public input. My personal position is that in Placer County, we do an extraordinary job of reaching out to the public so that we do have transparency, and at the end of the day, we all get re-elected or not, but I'm, I know that particularly today, that perception or different perception tends to become a part of our reality, and so trying to ensure and communicate that we have that transparency is very important, but I think as we go through this process, particularly in light of the unusual circumstances with what could be an incredibly collapsed timeframe, we have to factor that in, and over the years, I've heard so many people say they want more transparency or greater transparency, and at the end of the day, that happens with elections. So with that, I'm gonna open it up to the public, and we'll start receiving those calls.
Amber, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Hi, Amber Beckler, I live in Granite Bay. Thank you for the discussion and also the clarification on the advisory board versus ad hoc. I like what Suzanne and Bonnie discussed about the advisory committee, I think that gives really good participation. It sounds like the requirements are less restrictive than the independent commission that Roseville is pursuing. I did have one question for council regarding paid staff. I think that was one of the requirements, you can't be an elected official, you cannot be staff or paid campaign staff, so I'm assuming that means the district aides, but I would like clarification on that. And then I also think that there are people in the community that are outside of the Planning Commission and the Charter Review Committee that have a lot of interest and experience in district management, GIS, and the Voters' Right Act, which is probably more relevant than land use experience. So I think offering an application process that maybe is time-boxed to meet your requirements from an urgency perspective, you know, could really do justice in allowing the community to apply, and then you do an evaluation if you get enough people, if not, maybe you decide to restrict it to, you know, less than seven like Bonnie recommended, or then maybe pick some other people on existing committees. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we'll get an answer from County Council currently on your questions.
Sure, yes. The statute requires that paid campaign staff of elected officials cannot be on the Advisory Redistricting Commission. I would say that likely includes district aides, but it, there is some question as to kind of the definition of paid campaign staff and whether that district aide is campaign staff, but I would say it's likely that that means district aides could not be included.
Thanks Clayton.
Kathleen Crawford, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Good morning Board of Supervisors. I am very happy to see the interest in the advisory committee. As you know, as a resident of Roseville, I was one of the people who pushed Roseville into or encouraged Roseville to go with the independent redistricting commission, and it was approved by the voters. There's not enough time to do that at the county level at this time, so I believe an advisory commission is the very best route to pursue. There would be no reason why a planning commissioner or a charter review commissioner could not apply to be on this new redistricting advisory commission, so if they have that interest and expertise. But I agree completely that just to take a group of people that you've already appointed defeats the purpose of new public input, and it defeats the purpose of transparency. So I would really encourage you to look seriously at the advisory commission. You have a few months to get it up and running, there are less requirements as Staff Counsel has advised, and so I think that that is a proper way to proceed. I do believe that, that Bonnie's point, that it's gonna be very truncated between September and December, that timeframe needs to be very clear to the people who are applying. So I think that that is an important point, but I think that it can be done, and I think that that would serve the public interest to a far greater extent than just appointing people on an ad hoc basis. So thank you for your time and your consideration this morning.
Thank you.
Chairman, no more public comments.
Okay, we have no more public input, so I'll bring it back to the board for direction.
Just a quick question. In our other boards and commissions, county staff cannot participate in other boards and commissions for county, like Parks Commission, et cetera. Is that correct? Okay, so in this case, county staff would not be able to participate, which I think would be, I mean, in the ad hoc committee, obviously county staff has to run the committee and do all the work. But to the point about district aides, they're also county staff. So I think it's inappropriate to have county staff as a part of the advisory committee. With that, I mean, my recommendation is to have the advisory commission with seven members, one from each district, two at large, and really just go by the Advisory Redistricting Commission stipulations.
So the formal process?
The formal process.
So we relinquish any vote on it?
Well, no, ultimately, this process ultimately comes back to the Board of Supervisors. This Advisory Redistricting Commission ultimately comes back to the Board of Supervisors, unlike the independent.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to confirm.
You have a question. So they'll come back to the Board of Supervisors with two maps, or?
So there is no restriction on the number of maps. Historically, I think staff brought forward five maps.
Okay.
But I don't believe there's been a determination as to how many maps. And certainly, your board could decide if you have an interest in a certain number of maps.
Okay. And my other question is, is it possible for the board to make some more suggestions going by the guidelines that have been set forth on limitations on who can serve on the committee, the public committee, such as, I don't know, lobbyists and, you know, people that have been in elected office within the last five years? Or, you know, some, those are outlined in some of these guidelines.
Yes, the only mandatory requirements are the one that I mentioned earlier, which doesn't include county staff. If you wanted, you could certainly include any kinds of restrictions that you would like for members of the committee or commission.
Well, if you have suggestions, because this is the, if we move forward this, this is the time to do that. But we have to decide whether or not this is how we want to move forward. So that's my, you know, I'll make a motion that I'd like it to be the Advisory Redistricting Commission, but with five plus two members, so a seven-member commission.
There is a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
So there's a motion and a second. Jim, your light went off and then on, and I just wanted to know what your, you're good.
It's a better part of the wisdom.
So we have a, now we have Cindy's light.
So just to clarify the motion, the motion is to adopt the resolution creating the Advisory Redistricting Commission. And that particular resolution is Attachment B in the staff report.
Attachment B.
Great.
That's Attachment A, I thought.
Attachment A.
Is it?
Resolution A.
Oh, okay. It goes backwards on here.
Yes. Thank you. So as far as my comments, I said coming in that prior to this meeting, I'd had a lot of feedback, and I solicited a lot of feedback, and really did some thinking on our democracy and the state of our democracy, and certainly the campaign platform I ran on, and actually even the vote that we just had on a variance issue. So all play into kind of our background and perspectives when we come here. There is no group that we could pick, or that staff could pick, that would not also have agendas and biases and feedback. And yet, these people would be caused to be looking at a very critical issue for the county and making recommendations, and holding public meetings, and be the source of antagonism by people who don't agree with them for no compensation. And not because they were willing to serve, thank you, but they don't necessarily know what we go through in some of our feedback that we get as individuals about our character, about our families, about all kinds of issues, as you all know. So I was reflecting on the over forty-plus committees this county has, hundreds and hundreds of people that participate in our public process, and thirteen different MACs that we're expanding and agreeing to expand, and Planning Commission and all of these things. And I think we have such a robust public transparency and participation. The one thing I'll say about Placer County, when you look at our voter participation, when you look at the number of voters that we have, we are one of the top in the whole state as far as voter participation, as well as all the participation we get. So I find it that we're maybe trying to fix something rather than reinforce and reinventing the wheel. If there are concerns about transparency, then let's work within the hundreds of people and committees and opportunities people already have to participate, and let's make sure that is a robust process. And all of the MAC meetings are a robust process, and that that's really transparent. And then I know, for me as one supervisor, every email gets read, every constituent concern comes in, and I listen, and I think about it, and I process it, and really try to dive in. And just as we witnessed in the last item, we don't always agree with recommendations that come to us. We don't rubber stamp things. So I find myself wanting to back the professionalism of the county staff. I also don't want to put the county staff in a decision-making, who gets to be on this? Because, believe me, there will be more than seven people who want to serve, and somebody has to make the ultimate decision, who best. And then that, and those people who make that decision work for us, too. So, you know, I understand the sensitivity the voters feel, and we have got to prove them wrong, that this county can be absolutely transparent, open to their ideas and suggestions, and do it within all the existing frameworks. And I, this has been a hard decision for me, you know, to say, I can't support a whole nother committee. That we've got really great people working here. I'd like to make sure the cities have a say with their planning staff, if they want to work with our SEDRA staff, to be part of that and open that up. And then let's be as absolutely transparent, let's schedule those meetings for September now, so nobody can say they weren't aware that it was coming, and that that's going to be critical issues in that time. So I can't support the motion, I'm sorry.
Thanks. No, Suzanne's light on, but I have a question. So Jane is the one charged with getting us from here to there, and with what could potentially be a very interesting calendar as it relates to issuing the maps to the public, and noting the tension that was highlighted by Supervisor Holmes with regards to internally and staff and that perspective. So let's say we adopt this motion, could you describe for me how you're going to proceed with trying to get that done and brought back, and the process up and running? In two seconds, your life.
Well, we have, as I mentioned, an interdisciplinary staff team. We're scheduled to meet later this month to discuss today's board direction. And I guess I would say that I would probably report back after that meeting, out of deference to the expertise that we have, again, across CEO, council, SEDRA, clerk recorder, IT, rather than presume what is the best-informed multidisciplinary approach at this time. I suspect we would advertise in keeping with whatever criteria the board adopts. And then that group, essentially whoever is selected, in accordance with that board-approved criteria, is really on the back burner for a time, while we as staff do our work with the preliminary data that we have, which cannot go public until we receive the census data, which could be as late as September. We're hoping September 1. I've heard it could be later, which really sets the table for whoever is deciding this is going to have, maybe, best-case scenario, six weeks to do this work publicly. Because our backstop is we need final board approval by November 15th, so it's effective by the December 15th state deadline. On point with Supervisor Gore's question about any flexibility in that backstop, we did meet with our state lobbyists and with the Senate Elections Committee staff. There is no flexibility in that deadline, because they need to set the table, again, for 2022 elections filing. So I just want to let certainly the board and the viewing public know that this is the hand that we were dealt by being between a rock and a hard place, that is, the census data coming to us very late, the ability to only go public with potential future maps once that final census data is in hand, and the state deadline for, again, 2022 election filing. So this is nothing that we've brought upon ourselves. It's the hand we've been dealt, and we're trying to make the best of it.
Yeah, thanks, Jane.
Mr. Chair, I don't want to lose the fact that we have a motion on the table, but I do want to clarify for the board that you actually have two decision-making points here. The first is, do you want to do some kind of committee? You don't have to. You can go with what has been done before, which is that staff has looked at the maps, devised the maps, and brought it to the board. If you do want to go with a committee, then two options have been presented to you. But the second decision-making point, which is item number two on the agenda, is if you go for a committee, what kind of, who's going to be on that committee? That gives you the option of deciding, okay, we're going to take one that's existing, and they are going to be put, they're going to have an additional hat that they're wearing for purposes of the redistricting. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear to the board. You could?
Yeah, thanks. No, that's what I'm grappling with. At the end of the day, as I've mentioned, I want us to be the ones to make the decision. I don't want to delegate that. And I think we've all commented on that. So the question is, what happens in between here and there? And I'll just state, my personal view is that regardless who and how we appoint a committee for making recommendations to us, if someone wants to argue its lack of transparency and bias, I'm certain that they'll do that enthusiastically. So then the question is, how do we deal with that, and what's the best mechanism for making sure that particularly in unusual circumstances, we can vet here publicly on that day clearly and concisely what we did, what we considered, how we got from here to there. Some people will be happy, others will not. But I want that to rest on us, because I think that's why we were hired for those jobs.
Absolutely.
So with that, I'm going to go, Jim, Bonnie, Cindy, and Suzanne, just because that's the way my eyes went to the buttons.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I go back to the Planning Commission idea. They can have workshops, they can have comments, we can take this to the MACs, the MACs can make comments. There'll be plenty of outreach, plenty of, you know, participation in the public. And then we can have a workshop here before we make that final decision. So again, I think what we're trying to create is something that's more cumbersome, and it will just extend the time in order to get to where we need to be.
Bonnie.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment. I also know how much work our Planning Commission has, right? And they have had very long meetings. This is a county that's developing, and there's projects and projects and projects. And so then we're asking a group of people to take on an additional load of work, which is, would require a lot of public meetings and outreach. And I still think that a separate group, not one that's already been appointed by us, would allow for more people to participate.
Cindy.
I can, I'm, I really want us to be transparent. There is no doubt that this needs to be a very open process. And I have absolute confidence that staff would be the one going to the MACs and giving the presentation, summarizing those notes, and giving those to whatever body would be there as some sort of committee. I'm open to that concept, but ultimately to the board as well, that we would hear those. So Jim, I like the idea of the Planning Commission. They've already filled out their Form 700s. They're transparent, they're already vetted, because people don't realize when you stand to be on these committees and are making decisions, that you have to file other paperwork and disclose a number of things, or your judgment's called into question. Your judgment's called into question, anyway. But at least you've disclosed all those issues. And so I would support that as a middle ground here, to make sure that we have another layer of transparency and another process to go through. So all the MACs, town hall forums, I would suggest as well, Planning Commission, and then to the board. That would be kind of my thinking on this, to make sure that we've done this very transparently.
Suzanne.
Yeah, with all the comments that I'm hearing, what I see the board doing is we're morphing back into something that the board wants and not our constituents. Because if you take a look at it, the reason that the voters have gone with independent redistricting commissions over and over again, the entire state of California, the voters voted for that. Roseville voters voted for that. There's a number of other counties in California that are going with that, because that's what their voters want. And for us to sit here and say what we think would be easier, Planning Commission already knows, you know, that, it's not the point of this redistricting committee. It's, the point is to get an impartial panel, and I think of very experienced people. And I think whoever does the selection process, I recommended earlier that maybe we get a panel, say, people from the Auditor's Office and legal, who can look over these applications. I believe we should require people with some kind of GIS and mapping experience. If we just go to somebody, members from the MAC, I'm going to tell you, a lot of members from the MAC don't know anything about mapping, GIS, anything. And that's where the expertise comes in. The state gets hundreds of thousands of applications for these positions. So there are a lot of people out there. And I will bring up the San Juan Water District again, because they just went through this with redistricting into their districts. They had to go from at-large voting to district voting. And they had a large number of people that participated in that process, and they were very well-experienced, and they contributed greatly to that whole process. But again, I'm going to say, I don't think that people who were on the Charter Committee or even my, our Planning Commissioners, you know, they know about process. But what do they know about GIS mapping and all that experience? It's going to be required in order to have the job well-done here. And so that would be my recommendation, is that we still get our committee. I agree with Bonnie, we could do a reduced group, rather than two constituents from each. It'll be a little bit lighter. But then, let's put the application process on a group of people that are impartial, not the Planning Department, not the Board of Supervisors, an impartial group, and then you judge the applicants from their experience and their capabilities.
Supervisor Jones, I just wanted to respond to a couple of things. First off, I'm not trying to make this easier by any means, and I don't want my comments dismissed as if it's just to be in control of it. I want to make sure you're clear. I don't want to be in control of it, and I don't want our staff to be put in this awkward situation. I do agree that if we could find the right professionals, that would be great. I will tell you that most GIS experts are going to end up working for engineering companies who do work in the county, and then they're going to have conflicts, and we're going to have questions about, are they working for the developers or not? And ultimately, I don't think when a MAC holds a meeting, it's just for them, it's actually for them to encourage those experts to come into a MAC meeting and participate. That the whole point of MACs is to solicit their communities in giving us valuable input, not just their own individual qualifications or not. My MAC members are very diverse and very professional, and I would say most of them give me great advice and differing perspectives. And ultimately, then it comes to both our Planning Commission or board. So I just wanted to be clear, I'm not trying to make it easier or less transparent, I'm just trying to make sure that we're thoughtful, that our auditor stands for elected office as well. You know, our legal counsel doesn't, but actually works for all of us. So, you know, wherever we go, we end up with that. And I think us- And I think us standing up and holding pride on how we approach our job is the most critical. And I respect all my colleagues and their opinions on this. Thank you.
Okay, so, did you have more, Suzanne?
None.
We have a motion and a second. I have no idea who made those motions on second. Do you have that, are you good making?
Yes, I am. That was Gore and Jones.
And I think the motion is clear, since we've been debating enthusiastically. So could we have a roll call vote, please?
Gore?
Aye.
Holmes?
No.
Jones?
No.
Gustafson?
No.
Wygant?
No. So what is the next step, pleasure for the board?
I move that we appoint the planning commission to sit in, to do the analysis of the redistricting.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
So moved in second to have the planning commission be the committee that was discussed. Could we have a roll call vote on that?
Can we have a discussion?
Sure, you've got.
Just a brief one?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to bring up one little thing, Jim, nothing personal, but your planning commissioner doesn't serve as your planning commissioner anymore, so you had to select a new planning commissioner. So technically, and then your planning commissioner won the at-large planning commission seat. So technically, two of the commissioners on the planning commission have been selected by you, one in the past and then one in the present. Whereas we all have one planning commissioner selected by us on the planning commission. Does that make sense?
Well, we all approve the at-large positions.
Right.
Based on their qualifications. And so I, for the individual you're speaking of that is now the at-large, that gentleman is...
Oh, I agree. This is nothing about the gentleman. This is nothing about the gentleman.
Well, I find that their decisions are objective and rational and not political. And that's the greatest thing about this county. Again, I stand by the integrity of our commissioners.
Maybe I could add, so, let's say we went through the process that was discussed and did not pass. At the end of the day, I may have strong feelings one way or the other about somebody or some people that end up on that committee. And I get one of five votes. I'm comfortable with the planning commission. I can't envision this new committee having any better transparency than what is practiced here in Placer County. So we might find a group of people that I've never heard of before and that everything I hear about them is great, but likely not. But what's most important, I think, is that when the board votes to adopt five maps in a map for new districts, I'm the one who gets criticized for my vote or not. I was the one who got here. And it's important for me to listen to my constituents, but represent them as best as I think is important. And that's what I want most. That's why I want us to have that final decision, because I want us to take responsibility for that decision. So in light of everything, I think that perspective explained that, hopefully it's helpful to us and our constituents.
So my only other comment would be, how are we going to bring our constituents in to be involved in this process in some manner?
That we will have public hearings. I think all of us accept public input to the fullest extent that's humanly possible, including weekends and late nights and early mornings. And I think at the end of the day, we will, we will hear that. And I'm sure that that will be publicly vetted in a variety of ways. And then we'll vote. And we will then, after we vote, have to explain how and why we voted. So to me, after 26 years, that dynamic has, I think, served this county very, very well, not just because of me as one supervisor over the years, but because of all of us taken together and with that dynamic of staff bringing forward the expertise that we need and rely on so much. So hopefully that answers your question, I guess.
And I tried to identify what my thinking was, but please weigh in on that, that each of the MACs, it's not just a public hearing, that there's working meetings of the MACs as well as at least two, maybe more, town halls. Because then, again, you can take that public comment and report it back to these groups. Then you have, planning commission has a Brown Act requirement for open public meetings, and of course, the board. So that would be the minimum, is one pass at each of the MACs and these town, larger town halls, maybe the larger town halls to capture the broad picture. And then you go to the MACs, because they're the ones who may dig into specific areas, Suzanne, for feedback on a community alignment. And sometimes I wonder if we're, if this, if we're making too much of it, because in the end, there won't be that many disputes. But we need to be prepared that there could be disputes and challenges. So we want to make sure we're open and transparent. That was just my thinking, and appreciate any other input on that. But the town halls have been very effective during COVID for us to be able to reach a very broad group and get a lot of input. I've actually had better meetings with more participation at town halls lately than I have at MAC meetings, because we haven't had many MAC meetings.
If I'm not mistaken, though, we're legally required to have a number of public hearings, correct? For public hearings.
In addition to, in addition to what I just talked about, the required, that was just additional.
Yes.
Well, and one thing Supervisor Gustafson noted, you know, I think it's also important to know that we're not quite sure at what point we will be in this COVID crisis. So it could well be that a lot of these meetings are held virtually. It's just hard to presuppose where we'll be come September, October, which is when this public process will take place.
Right. Thanks, Jim. Okay, Megan.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I clarify the motion? Is the motion to adopt the resolution creating the advisory redistricting commission and directing the planning commission to serve as that commission? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Karen. Roll call, please.
Gore?
No.
Holmes?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes. Thank you. So we will now take up department items. It is 12 o'clock, right?
Yes.
I couldn't believe it when I saw it. Thank you, I finally found it. Petition for recognition of Placer County Law Enforcement Management Association, Kate.
Thank you, Chair Wygant and members of the board. On behalf of the CEO, your employee relations officer, I'm Kate Sampson with your Human Resources Department, and I'm requesting concurrence with his recommendation regarding the first amended petition for exclusive recognition of the Placer County Law Enforcement Management Association. The petition proposes a bargaining unit that consists solely of sworn law enforcement classified managers in the sheriff's office and district attorney's office. The classifications included are sheriff's captain, sheriff's lieutenant, and district attorney investigator. Pursuant to the county's employer-employee relations policy, the petition has been reviewed and determined to meet the policy standards. The employee relations officer seeks your board's concurrence with a determination that PCLEMA is an appropriate unit. If an affirmative determination is made, notice will then be provided to the approximately 20 employees that would be covered by this unit. The county will allow 30 days for any challenging petitions, and then a secret ballot election will be held before formal recognition. I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Kate. Any questions? I see none. Anyone from the public?
Can you turn your audio off in the background, please? Okay, go ahead and state your name for the record and give your comments.
Yeah, my name is Jeff Spurringen. I'm the president of the Placer County Law Enforcement Management Association. Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. I'd like to speak on behalf of the Placer County Law Enforcement Management Association, otherwise known as the PCLEMA. On behalf of the PCLEMA, I'd like to thank the CEO and HR for bringing this item in front of the board, and thank the board for their support. My comments will be brief, and we wanted to offer information regarding the purpose of the PCLEMA. Public safety managers in Placer County have very complex job duties besides the day-to-day operations and supervision of personnel. Our role with the county is to mitigate risk and reduce liability and exposure to the county while providing the highest quality of public safety service. We are the individuals who are thrust into the role of acting as infinite commanders during a high likelihood of critical incidents such as active shooter events, in charge of managing life-threatening situations such as fires, floods, and other natural disasters, as well as directing major investigations such as officer-involved shootings, in custody deaths, and use of force incidents. It is our intent to continue the proud tradition of having the best safety managers working to ensure the security and safety the Placer County community deserves. In addition, to achieve that goal, we must be able to attract, promote, and maintain the highest quality individuals to fulfill these critical roles. I'd like to thank you for your time. I look forward to working with all of you as we move through the recognition process.
Thank you.
Chairman, there's no more public comment.
No more? Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Second?
Motion, Holmes, second, Gustafson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we are now going to adjourn into closed session. And I just want to note, staff can sort of help us, help me, anyway. We have a 12:30 timed item with Dr. Oldman on COVID, so there might be a lot of interest in that. And if for some reason it looks like we're going to be in there for a long period of time, maybe we could be a few minutes late, but not, and we could break and, just so the public knows, we'll be eating lunch while we're doing closed session. So maybe we'll be a little bit late, but we'll try to keep that on target for the public and for Rob. Thanks.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider one item of existing litigation, one item of anticipated litigation, and a conference with labor negotiators.
Thank you. Okay, the board has returned from closed session, and county council will report out.
The board met in closed session, considered one item of existing litigation, that being the State of California versus Workright. The board heard a report and authorized settlement. The board also considered one item of potential exposure to litigation. The board heard a report and provided direction. The board then conducted a conference with labor negotiators. Following thereafter, the board gave direction. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you, Karen. So the board will take up its last item of the day, which is a 12:30 timed item, which is our monthly COVID update. So, Dr. Oldman, I'm thinking you're waiting for us, but I can't see you. Now I can see you. Hey, Rob.
All right, great. And you can hear me, too, I hope.
Yep, yep, sound good.
All right, great. Well, thank you, Chair Wygant and members of the board. Rob Oldman with Helping Hand Services. I'm here this morning with Mike Romero from Public Health to provide your board with our monthly update on Placer County HHS's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. At the January 26 meeting, we provided interim updates to our January 9 monthly report, including signs of improvement in our COVID-related metrics, an unanticipated announcement by the governor of the expansion of vaccine eligibility to residents 65 and older, and a significant gap between the relatively small number of vaccines being allocated to Placer each week and the much greater capacity of Placer HHS and our partners to administer vaccines. This afternoon, I'll provide additional updates on COVID-related data and metrics, and then hand off to Mike, who will provide some updates on vaccine allocation, prioritization, and distribution. While we'll be providing a general overview today, I would encourage members and the public who want a more detailed description of our data to check out the more extensive monthly Placer County COVID-19 update that was just published last Friday and can be found at www.placer.ca.gov/coronavirus/news. Okay, and I see the slides are up, so how about we advance to the next slide, please? So let's start out with some good news. I think we could all use some good news. As you can see here, our COVID case rate has dropped precipitously in the last month and has continued to drop since our interim update at the January 26 board meeting. And yet, our case rate of about 15 cases per 100,000 is still higher than the highest point we had seen back three months ago. As I'll show you in a few minutes, our case rate is still very much in the purple tier under the state's tier framework. We are cautiously optimistic that with sustained community effort to decrease transmission, we can see additional improvements in our case rate. However, future improvements are unlikely to be as precipitous as we've seen in the last month. And of course, we're also closely watching what happens with the new COVID variant, including B.117, which was recently detected in the Sacramento region. These variants have the potential to spread much more quickly and could complicate our efforts to mitigate transmission of COVID. Next slide, please. So in addition to our case rate, you can see here that our testing positivity rate is also down sharply in the last month. Although you can also see that it's at a historically high level. As I'll show you in a few minutes, our current testing positivity rate is now consistent with the red tier in the state's tier framework. Next slide, please. Okay, how about some more good news? As you see here, our hospitalizations due to COVID are also down sharply from a peak of 208 back in late December. Our hospitals remain very busy. In fact, this is usually a busy time of year for them, but at least they aren't overwhelmed with COVID cases like they were back in December. And while staffing and healthcare is always a challenge, it doesn't seem to be quite as impossible to staff as it seemed just a few months ago. One thing that seems to be helping is that virtually all of our healthcare workers have now been offered a COVID vaccination. Again, Mike will talk more about vaccines in just a few minutes. Next slide, please. So similarly, the number of patients in our ICUs, you'll see here, is due to COVID is down, although not as sharply as hospitalizations overall. It's interesting to see the proportion of patients in our ICUs who are Placer residents appears to have dropped even more sharply. Next slide, please. So it's sobering to stop and think about how many people have died from COVID and the impact those losses have had on our world, our communities, and on the families that they left behind. I think especially hits home as more and more of us now know someone who has died from this terrible virus. It's so sad to think that we lost 48 Placer residents to COVID just in the month of January. And yet, I guess there's a silver lining in that we were projecting back in December that this number for January might be over 100. Next slide, please. Okay, and the last slide before I hand off to Mike to talk about vaccines. As promised, here is where we stand in the state's tier framework. As stated earlier, our case rate is still solidly in the purple tier, but our testing positivity rate and health equity positivity rate are now in the red tier. As a reminder, the state's tier framework allows counties with their testing positivity rate and the health equity positivity rate, both two tiers better than their case rate, for two weeks in a row to accelerate one tier ahead. So in our case, if both our testing positivity rate and health equity positivity rate were orange for two weeks in a row, then we would be eligible to move into the red tier. People are constantly asking me if and when we'll be able to move into the red tier. This is tough to predict, especially because there are so many variables that could impact this, including the new virus variant as well, and how well we as a community are able to maintain masking, distancing, and other critical virus mitigating behaviors. However, this one thing, I will predict, if we do eventually move into the red tier, it would likely be if both our testing positivity rate and health equity positivity rate were moved into orange. The good news is, with our investments in testing, contact tracing, outreach to less-advantaged neighborhoods, and robust and equitable vaccine distribution, I think we're well-positioned to at least make a run at it. Okay, with that, I will hand over to Mike Romero, who, again, has been doing a terrific job in leading our back- job in leading our vaccine distribution effort. There are just so many variables coming at us that seem to change almost every day, and there are so many distractions and challenges beyond our control. And despite not having a day off in over a year, Mike just maintains so much positivity and helps to keep our team positive and focused on what we can control and on our important mission of serving our residents to the best of our ability. So thank you, Mike. It's all yours.
Thanks, Rob, and I, I appreciate the compliment. I always, um, in these settings, I always feel like I get to represent a bunch of people. Um, you know, Chris Hazen, best friend, Sarah Hagan, Cassandra Call, Joe Arseneth, Vinita Heston, Meg Dorsey, um, these, these are our primary planning team. And of course, Katie Combs, Pritchard, Raul Martinez, and Rob Oldman. These are the folks that, that, uh, get all this done together, and so, um, I appreciate the thanks, Rob, but as you know, there's a, there's a whole bunch of people who deserve credit for the state that we're in right now. So with that, if we can go to the next slide, please. So, we continue to make vaccine available to individuals in Phase 1A, uh, which includes healthcare workers primarily, Phase 1B, which includes educators, childcare providers, uh, emergency services, including law enforcement, and of course, Placer County residents over the age of 65 years old. Next slide. Today, uh, Placer County has been allocated about 27,000 first doses of vaccine. On average, we're allocated just, just over 4,800 doses per week. It's important to distinguish first from second doses. The second doses are much of the doses you see in here in the media that are, um, quote, you know, sitting in freezers. Um, we, we get that a lot. We continue to reserve second doses as second doses to ensure maximum vaccine efficiency, efficacy, uh, for our customers. And we're going to continue this strategy until the CDC or, or, or CDPH instructs us to do otherwise. There's lots of confusion out there. Um, there's some encouragement to use second doses as first doses, but we're going to stick with, uh, Dr. Fauci's advice, uh, which is that the science, um, suggests that we should, uh, try to reach maximum efficacy for individuals in order to have a largest and the best impact, uh, on the, on the broader community. But like with all things in COVID, uh, things change. So, will change if, if the federal government or the state government instructs us to do otherwise. Next slide, please. So to date, we've distributed a little over half of our allocated vaccine to our healthcare partners. And this is imperative to the continuity and sustainability of, of our vaccine campaign. No one organization can do it alone, uh, nor, nor should it attempt to. Uh, we're fortunate to partner with Sutter Health, Kaiser Permanente, Tahoe Forest Health System, Western Sierra Medical Clinic, Safeway, SaveMars, and this week Walgreens, uh, will get involved in administering vaccine, uh, at one store, uh, so far in Roseville. This week, uh, we allocated vaccine to several primary care providers in Lincoln, Auburn, and Rockland, as well as Remedy RX Pharmacy and Compounding in Roseville. So it's nice to get new partners engaged. It should also be noted that, that Chapada Indian Health Services has administered about 1,300 doses, um, to staff and their patients. Of course, Chapada receives their vaccine directly from that Indian Health Service and isn't counted in our, um, in our numbers for the county. Um, mostly you know that Sutter Health has consolidated vaccine administration to a location in, in Roseville. Um, Kaiser Permanente will soon consolidate vaccination at Sierra College in Rockland. And, uh, and I will remind everyone that for all of these vaccination efforts between the pharmacies, the providers, the county, and our, and our hospital partners, that these are all by appointment only, no walk-ins. And this is really so we can manage the, the response with some efficiency, with some order. Uh, we don't want to see long lines early in the morning, uh, in bad weather, um, to get a vaccine. So expect, uh, appointment only at all of our partners. And the last slide, please. Okay, so this week marks our sixth week administering COVID-19 vaccine at the grounds in Roseville. We've administered well over 15,000 doses at the grounds during the month of January. Uh, during the first week of February, we administered nearly 4,400 doses, and yesterday, we administered the most vaccines that we have administered in a single day at 1,155. Just kind of fun to hit new milestones. Our progress and success to date is really due to our planning team, uh, the names of which I rapidly, uh, mentioned earlier, uh, clinic staff, both permanent staff from HHS and the, the large extra help workforce that we've built, community partners such as the grounds, and, uh, the patients in cooperation of Placer County residents who, um, do struggle to get an appointment, uh, and then come to the grounds and, uh, and experience a, um, a well-run clinic that hopefully, hopefully represents, you know, what their local health department can do, uh, for them, uh, during, uh, during an emergency. So with that, um, I'll turn back to Rob. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mike. Um, and before we finish up and take questions, I just wanted to follow up on something that Mike said about our record day at the grounds yesterday, you know, vaccinating 1,155 people. Uh, so that's a really incredible accomplishment, and, um, you know, I just wanted to highlight that, uh, despite, you know, some of the challenges our residents are having, you know, getting appointments, we're getting almost universally, uh, positive feedback on a daily basis about the, you know, efficiency and professionalism of our clinic operations at the grounds. So again, kudos to Mike named, uh, many of the staff involved in that. Uh, and, and they really appreciate, uh, all, all of the folk from elected officials to everyday citizens who have taken the time to share their kind words and praise, and I think they appreciate, uh, it feels good to, to be successful and to see, you know, large numbers of people that they're able to serve and, and, and serve, uh, in a, in a way that makes a difference in, in their lives. So just wanted to say thank you. Uh, your praise and encouragement and support really do help to keep our morale up, especially, uh, when we continue to get some, uh, challenges, uh, and negative feedback about the vaccine distribution from certain sources, uh, that don't really seem to match up with our local experience. So, uh, thanks, thanks for that. Um, and, uh, I'll also say we continue to appreciate any feedback, um, to, you know, how we can get better, and I think, uh, we're, we're actually even, uh, Mike and his team are not resting on their laurels, so just this week, I think continuing to try to change things and, um, uh, add more vaccinators and see if we can even, um, do, run things even, even better than what we've been able to do, which is, uh, pretty, pretty impressive that they continue to, to try to adjust and, um, make things better. So with that, um, like, once again, I want to thank, uh, you for the opportunity to share this time, and, uh, happy to answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
Thanks, you guys. So I'll kick it off by, uh, if, if it's true you actually like compliments, I want to, uh, compliment you to the highest I possibly can. I've had constituents with, um, unique questions, um, or with special needs, and you guys, all of you have done above and beyond, um, and probably representative of the nicest series of compliments I've ever gotten in the 26 years I've been in this job. So, thanks for that part, too, but I'll open it up to my colleagues for any particular questions or comments they may choose. Uh, Bonnie?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Oldman, and thank you, uh, Mike. Really appreciate having the opportunity to actually see the organization and how it was run, run very smoothly, and as Supervisor Wygant said, lots of positive compliments. Quick question, there was a, a comment that came in about drive-through vaccinations, and I understand the reason why drive-through vaccinations might not be the best option. So, uh, Mike, if you could address that for our resident, that would be helpful.
Sure, I know it's, um, it's really tempting, right? It sounds nice. You stay in your car, um, and that there's, there's some, you know, physical distancing certainly that a car affords. Drive-through clinics are really best when you have a, a location with lots of acreage, uh, not so much lots of parking spaces, but a long stretch where, where really miles of cars can be lined up without interrupting surface streets, right? And so, we really don't have locations that fit that criteria. We've done drive-through clinics at Sierra College, uh, drive-through flu clinics in the past at Sierra College, but you really only talk in about a few hundred cars in, in a day. So, trying to vaccinate, you know, 1,100, 1,200 residents, imagine the line of cars that we would create. It would be very disruptive, not just to normal traffic, but also to public safety issues as well, emergency response and things like that. So, so some communities are really, um, they have a location that's well-designed, where you can really stretch cars out where they won't interrupt, um, sort of normal traffic operations, and we don't feel that we have that location. Uh, for a small effort, absolutely wonderful, but if you're going, if we can vaccinate, you know, up to 1,200 people a day, then the, really the best model for us is the, um, is the in-person model that we're doing now.
Thank you, and Mike, just a follow-up on that, because I, I think I recall you telling me that after someone gets vaccinated, they, they're asked to sit and wait for about 15 minutes to have eyes on in case there might be some type of reaction to the vaccination. Is that correct?
Yeah, so 15 minutes is the standard right now, um, and then if, if we have a drive-through model, then, um, certainly other communities like a CalExpo, for example, uh, they do have, uh, a drive-through model, um, where the cars park and someone can still monitor from there. So, so the observation part's not impossible, it's more challenging with vehicles. For us, it's really a question of volume. We know that we can serve more individuals with our current model than a drive-through model. Again, some communities are doing that as well. I, I would argue that they're usually doing fewer people per day, and then, and ideally, they have a much longer, longer stretch of road, uh, which can be controlled and not disrupt, like I said, normal traffic patterns, and then public safety efforts by law and fire and, and EMS as well.
Great, thank you so much.
Cindy?
Um, I want to do all the compliments that both, um, Robert and Bonnie gave you. Outstanding service to our community, and I keep hearing it every day, compliments not only on the vaccination process and the service at the grounds, uh, in particular, but also the responsiveness to many of my constituents who have had questions, um, that are unique and individualized, and you all get back to me all hours of the day, night, weekends, so I really appreciate it. Any news from the state on what the transition to Blue Shield might look like for vaccination moving forward? That has made myself very concerned, as well as many others.
Yeah, uh, I'll, I'll, uh, start and see if Mike can, knows anything, Supervisor Gusterson. Um, yeah, the, you know, we, the state did announce this transition to a third-party administrator, uh, and then I think it was sort of, uh, maybe leaked ahead of the contract even being signed that it was going to be Blue Shield, so, um, and talking with folks at the California Department of Public Health, I don't think anyone has actually seen the contract, and so I think there's lots of speculation as far as what, and maybe that's, I'm hearing a date of perhaps, uh, next week sometime, maybe February 15th is one date I heard as to when that, the specifics of what in that contract will be publicly available. So, uh, I think it's, uh, to be, to be determined, uh, exactly what that, you know, what Blue Shield's role would be, and then what, uh, role the local health jurisdictions might retain in vaccine administration. So, yeah, we're, we're, um, also paying close attention to that, but at the same time, I think that's one of the, you know, with all the changes, everything seems to be changing, and, and also, um, some questions about, uh, you know, the data as far as the number of vaccines being distributed, but again, Mike and his team, um, have, you know, just focusing on what we can control, what we know. Uh, I, I do think, certainly for the, the rest of the month, we're going to be, uh, probably untouched by any of these changes, but we'll stay tuned to see kind of what the, what the future may hold. But Mike, any other thoughts on that?
Thank you.
No, I just, it's just, it's really truly new to us all, and, um, I'm trying not to get overly worried. Uh, it's easy for us to get worried about such things. I'm, I'm trying to, um, hold back my worry until I have more, uh, information. You know, we, we typically like lots of local control, um, and so it's hard for, uh, it's hard for me to imagine that, uh, being taken away from us, but I'm going to reserve my, uh, my worry until I've got something in front of me. Easier, easier said than done, but I'm going to try.
One, one other point, I think, uh, the, the hope is the, and Blue Shield has significant networks, especially among, uh, providers, physician groups, um, and so that's, that's one of the hopes as we move into medically, um, vulnerable, you know, when, as we start to prioritize people based off of their medical vulnerability, that'll be really helpful. In fact, we're already, as Mike pointed out, allocating as much as we can to those, you know, physician practices and other, uh, practices, so, um, but, but I, I do think that, uh, Blue Shield might have, uh, some strength in, in, in doing that, you know, uh, in a sustained way. Um, I'm not aware, maybe, maybe they do have experience in doing kind of more the mass vac, vaccination clinic, of doing, you know, like these employment-based tiers, like educators and emergency services, et cetera. But, uh, obviously, local public health has a lot of experience, uh, in that. I know, uh, some, some of us here, you know, have, at least this is our second pandemic, uh, so, uh, that's, that's, uh, what the concern, I guess, going forward is, um, uh, you know, who's going to be doing what and what, what experience, how can we utilize our experience here and our, our knowledge of our communities here? I think as we talk about, one of the concerns of the administration is around, you know, equitable distribution of vaccine. I think that's a concern that we have as well. I think we're, uh, some of, again, some of the investments that we've, uh, been making and, and work that we're doing in the community will help that, and, uh, so, you know, we just hope that's preserved through whatever changes might come in the future.
Well, I appreciate it. It's up to us to do the worrying up here, so we'll, we'll keep up on that. Um, I, you know, I, I do, I am concerned about the, um, of them doing anything that would dismantle all the work and prep that has gone into setting up, um, the great partnerships you've already created, and the, and the grounds is a, is a great example of success in doing 1,100, over 1,100 vaccines yesterday. What a great result. But talking about equity, are we getting our fair share? If you look at the populations and the distribution of the vaccine, do you think, when you look at the numbers statewide, are you seeing that this vaccine is being distributed to us in a manner that is equitable compared to our, to other areas per population?
Yeah, well, that, that's a tough one to answer. I know, uh, certainly we, we wish we had more vaccine, especially when we, you know, have the capacity, but at the same time, I mean, I look to other counties, just don't, don't look after look any further than Sacramento County, um, and some of their allocations didn't, didn't make sense, especially back, you know, last month. Um, I think there was one month where they got like 100 doses or something. So, a county with much larger population and, uh, you know, so, uh, it's, I'm hesitant to complain too much because I know there are other counties that, um, have, uh, maybe have, have more of a beef even, even than, than we do. I'll also point out that initially, the distribution was largely focused on healthcare workers, and so Placer County has a lot of healthcare workers, and so some of the numbers that you're seeing are a result of that, for good or for bad, right? But Mike, any other thoughts, Mike?
I mean, I, in some ways, we've been fortunate. Uh, we can certainly receive a, a ton more, but as, as Rob said, talking with some of our neighbors, you know, they're really held back. Um, Sacramento's a great example, but, you know, our, our neighbors in Nevada County, who, uh, who could handle a lot more vaccine. So, um, it, it's hard to say, uh, it's not, it's clearly not strictly population-based, but I suspect that that's going to change. You know, as, as state moves to an age-based, uh, criteria, then I, I imagine, something that could, that is easily estimated, I'm imagining that our allocation might change, um, based on that strategy.
Great, well, keep an eye on it, and if there's any concerns that we can raise at our level, please let us know. And then finally, on equity, one of the concerns I've heard from constituents is that at least, I believe as of yesterday, but it might have been last week, Tahoe Forest Hospital was still only doing vaccines for 75 and up. Safeway and Kings Beach was only doing 75 and up, so Placer County residents were having to drive down the hill, which works for those who have the means to do that. But if you're in that gap, we're missing 65 to 75-year-olds who may not be able to drive to the grounds, and, and so I'm wondering, can we convince Tahoe Forest that that should be lowered? I know we don't have enough vaccine, but our Placer County residents that live in Eastern Placer don't feel they're getting, uh, as much opportunity unless they're willing to drive over the hill in, in, uh, sometimes iffy situations.
Yeah, I, I would just say, I think that's a fair point. Um, you know, we, we've known, because I think, uh, speaking of equity, like different counties have had, you know, we talked about different, uh, vaccine allocations, and so as we've moved through the tiers, we've moved through at different speeds, but even with our, within our own county, I know, for instance, um, uh, you know, there are some employment-based groups that went first in Eastern Placer, and so unfortunately, I think that's a reality is, especially with, uh, you know, um, we're, uh, we're reliant upon the partnership and appreciate the partnership with Tahoe Forest, and, uh, we, we really don't have a lot of, really don't have a lot of, HHS certainly, no full-time public health employees in the basin. It's really helpful to have partners. And so, yeah, we, but also understand, you know, when you partner, things get more complicated, right? And so that's one of the challenges is the criteria are a little bit different. And so we'll work through that. I don't know, Mike, if you have any other thoughts on how do we remedy that situation? But I wanted just to say, to recognize that, yeah, it is a challenge.
It's unique. Tahoe Forest is in a tough position because they want to help out so bad, so badly, right? And they've got to juggle the needs of two counties. Two counties moving at different rates, getting entirely different allocations. So Tahoe Forest is a little in the middle in that regard. So I appreciate their spirit, their desire to vaccinate the community. We'll continue to work with them, Nevada County as well. You know, I know that we're sending 400 doses to the hospital tomorrow for their Tuesday clinic. And we'll follow with both Tahoe Forest, I think actually Tahoe Forest will be going to 65 and older. I just can't remember if it's this following week or the week after.
Okay.
And we'll work with Safeway as well to see if that 75 and older is still the appropriate strategy, whether it's in Kings Beach or the rest of the county. Usually when you use these tiers or these, whatever qualifiers, when you get further along, the schedule seems to not get as full, and that's your indicator that you can move on to the next group. So I expect that, I expect that they'll be moving on quickly. I mentioned Safeway again, you know, their partnership has been imperative to help Kings Beach out. And we're always looking for other answers, other solutions. Right now, the answer is Tahoe Forest and Safeway.
Yeah. Well, I really appreciate your efforts there. I know it's a challenge and they, Nevada County approached some things differently, which we went along with. I'd like to see them maybe put some thought into allowing 65 and up, just so that Placer County residents throughout the county have equal access. But that's, you know, we still don't have enough vaccine, and that's what we've just got to keep reminding everybody that we'd be doing more if we had more. And that's where we need to focus our political energy. I just wanted to, again, thank you, the staff, for a tremendous job. I just, we can't thank you enough on behalf of everybody.
Suzanne?
Yes. I've had constituents call me. First of all, I want to let you know that the ones who have been through the process and gotten their first shots raved about the service and the process and the way it was all handled. But I've had some constituents say that there's no commitment to getting the second vaccine. And so there are some of my constituents that have been more than 21 days since they received their first vaccine. And there were some, I can't verify this, but some constituents were told to go to Elk Grove. One was told to go somewhere in Arden area. And so that I didn't understand. Is there some way they can make in a commitment to these folks, once they get their first vaccination, that, you know, they're going to be able to get their second?
Yeah, so we have purposely held our second doses to ensure that our customers who received a first would get a second dose online, because we do everything by an online schedule. Those schedules are separate. So, you know, you schedule for a first if you haven't been vaccinated, you schedule for a second when we open up that schedule. So one of the frustrations from the community is, why aren't we seeing the schedules opened up for weeks on end? Well, the reason truly is, is, you know, we don't know what our weekly allocation is at any sort of, at any sort of time. So we get the allocation, we distribute it to our partners, and by Thursday night or so, Friday, we start figuring out next week's clinic. So that includes the second-dose clinics as well. But I would assure any eligible person that we've reserved second doses. The great thing about the second-dose group is, number one, they've already been through the clinic, they know exactly what to expect. Those clinics go faster. In fact, because they go faster, we're able to offer more first doses during second-dose clinics, which was one of the reasons why we reached the 1,155 mark yesterday. We'd added first-dose clinics. But they could be, and then because they've received their first dose, they're in the system, we can communicate with them directly. We typically send them an invitation on the Friday before the week that their vaccine is due.
How do you
So that's not a ton of notice. But, so that's why, you know, they want to schedule both at the same time, but we don't. And so I know that's part of the frustration, but my message to the community is, look for that invitation the Friday before the week that your dose is due. And then lastly, you know, if you've gotten Pfizer, you get your second dose anytime after the 21st day. If you've had Moderna, it's anytime after the 28th day. So the precision of 21 or 28 is less important than sort of the time period afterwards.
Okay. And so how do you send them notice? Do they still sign up to the same text alert system?
So for second-dose clinics, they don't have to receive, they're going to get an email directly from us indicating that it's time to schedule their second appointment.
Yeah, so that's like a private link. So that'll be a much easier scheduling process, kind of recognizing, scheduling your first-dose appointment is still a scramble, right? But the second-dose appointment, we're reserving plenty of appointments so that that's not the same scramble. There's generally lots of choices. So the other thing to point out, I'm reminded to check your spam box. So the emails sometimes will go to spam. And so some people receive the emails, one is that they're not coming in, as Mike said, until like just in time. And so a lot of people who are worried about it, but then they say, oh, yeah, I got the email, it just, you know, they kind of didn't come early. And I know some others, some of our partners have been scheduling second-dose appointments at the time of service or, you know, at the time of the first dose or earlier. But in general, people are getting them, sometimes they're going to the spam. If there's someone who, for whatever reason, doesn't have, you know, doesn't get the email in time, they can reach out and we'll see if we can figure out what's happening. But yeah, we really are, and Mike pointed out, there's some controversy about this. I know some other counties have kind of been, you know, felt the need to cancel, you know, and pivot to more first doses. But I think we've made the commitment that we will give, prioritize everyone who gets the first dose, getting, you know, getting a second dose. And so like Mike says, until we get kind of a different message, I think we're going to continue to honor that commitment for those who've already received the first doses. I don't see any, that's changing anytime soon.
Okay. And then another thing, I've had some constituents who called me to say that they signed up for the text alerts, and then when they got the text alerts, they scrambled to get online as quickly as they can. They're having difficulty getting through, which I imagine with the volume is probably not anything unusual. But they get on there and they said they have to fill out several pages of information. And then by the time they get done with filling out the information, the appointments are all gone.
Yep.
And is it true that every time you get on there to sign up for an appointment, you still have to fill all those same pages out every time?
Yeah, unfortunately, that's a feature of the system, Prep Mod. The good news is that will be changing in the future. So we're transitioning, it's a state-run system, but the state's requiring us to change to a new system, the CalVax, I get all the different names. There are so many different systems that keep changing, but I think it's CalVax now. Mike, is that right? No?
No, no. CalVax is for the providers.
That's on our side, yeah.
Yeah, so this is the MyTurn that you've seen advertised. You can register now in MyTurn. We're not doing anything with it yet, but we will be. It's being piloted in LA and San Diego counties. And it will be onboarded in the month of February for a launch no later than the beginning of March. And my staff say that the preview so far, they like MyTurn much better. Prep Mod, we're super fortunate to have it because we didn't have to create it ourselves, right, which saved us a lot of time. But it is backwards. You should be able to identify the date and time before you fill out the form. They did get it backwards. And we expressed that concern of Vanita Heston, our immunization coordinator, she's also a bit of an IT guru, too. And so she expressed that concern from day one. And it's one of those systems, it wasn't really built to be modified to suit our needs. It was really purchased from another state to meet our needs until the state can develop their own system. But I'm told that the new system will be far more robust and more user-friendly.
Just one workaround, so we're kind of hearing on the social media, kind of people are identifying workarounds. But one workaround is that you can change your browser settings so at least it'll auto-populate the things in the form so that you don't have to fill out everything over and over again. So if you find a teenager, they can show you how to do that.
Okay. Okay. And then the last question I have is, can anyone go to Sutter or Safeway or any of the others in the county that are being offered, no matter what healthcare coverage they have?
Yeah, so it's blind to healthcare coverage for, you know, any of our, you know, the partners, including, I guess, now for Sutter and Kaiser. Is that right, Mike?
I'm not sure that that's true for Sutter and Kaiser at this point. For Sutter, though, I will say, they reach out to their patients through MyHealth Online, I think it's called.
That's right.
And I understand that if you're not a Sutter patient, you could still sign up for an account in MyHealth Online and then get vaccinated at Sutter. That's available now. I'm less familiar with Kaiser's opportunities for non-Kaiser members at this time.
Well, I can tell you Kaiser's message is, don't call us, we'll call you. I'm serious about that. When you call up, they say, we'll call you, we'll call you, but they never do. I think that, oh, I do have one more question to ask, and this is a little bit of a stretch. But is there anything you can do to help me get teachers vaccinated in the district or in Placer County? Because, not to show favoritism to a certain class of people, but this is pivotal for us getting our kids back in school. A lot of teachers do not want to teach until they get their vaccinations.
Yeah.
So it's
Go ahead, Mike.
Sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, we did open up, you know, the educators, including teachers and other school staff, are in Phase 1B Tier 1. And so I guess it's been a couple of weeks now where we opened up to educators and actually emergency services in Phase 1B Tier 1. Absolutely, it's tough. I am hearing from a lot of educators, including teachers, that they're getting appointments. And I know just from, again, the morale, like that we're, it feels really good when those folks get appointments. I know several actually were able to scramble and get them yesterday, but the vast majority, right, just because of the numbers, most people still are struggling to get appointments. So kind of recognizing that, and I would say, continuing to be persistent and signing up for the text alerts and, you know, getting, like we said, getting someone to help you auto-populate your information so you can quickly go into the scramble is unfortunately the best answer we have right now. But educators, including teachers, are a priority. And I think as we move forward and get, for instance, a 65-plus, we're going to be at this for a long, a long time. So we're going to, hopefully, the answer is getting more vaccine, I think. Mike, any other ideas?
So teachers basically can do the same thing as everyone else, and they don't have, they're in 1B Tier 1 without having to be over 65.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, great. I think that does it. Thank you so much.
Jim?
I will say that those teachers are well-organized. So we all want to prioritize teachers and they're, obviously, they're a valuable role. They're well-organized, so they're competing well. They're just, you know, they're competing with a bunch of other groups. And so, yeah, and we will consider, we will continue to look at other opportunities where we can, whether it's increasing partners who might have, might be dedicated solely for particular tiers or other special events. Those are things that we talk about as we figure out what to do with future allocations.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Oldham, Michael, for this update. I appreciate the hard work that your staff is doing to get as many people vaccinated as soon as possible in a seamless and easy way. So don't have too much to add, I just wanted to really thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will open it up to public comment.
Chairman, I see no public comment.
Thank you. Okay, that was our last item. I'm adjourning today in memory of Dave Frosto, who was lifelong personal friend, former member of the city Lincoln Council and mayor, had a very distinguished career with Sacramento City Police Department, or Fire Department, where he started when he graduated from Sac State and retired as battalion chief. He's survived by his wife Jan of 50 years and his two sons, Michael and Conrad, at Sistery Lane, and five grandchildren. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.